Good evening. Thank you for coming. I'd like to call to order this regularly scheduled meeting of the Village of Ortonville Council. It is now February 26, 2018, and it is now about five after seven. So let's stand for the pledge and the imocation, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please bow your heads. Lord, as we enter this Lenten forty-day season, help us all to be drawn closer to your example of contemplative introspection. Help us to view both ourselves and those we come in daily contact with in love and peace which transcends our human nature for greed and control. In thy name we pray. Amen. Liz, roll call, please.
Bryce?
Here.
Buxu?
Here.
Eshman?
Here.
Robinson?
Here.
Skornica?
Here.
Sliva?
Here.
Wills?
Here. We have an agenda. Are there any additions?
I have a question on these administrative updates. I know we've brought this up before about the updates of their old business to be carried over into old business on the agenda. It provides a tracking. It provides the agenda for residents to know what we're talking about. Can we get those changed to old business and new business as appropriate?
And most of them are. So, well, no, we've taken your suggestion to light.
Yeah, none of them are on here.
Well, the scrap tire guarantee certainly is.
Do we know which ones aren't?
Then all of them but that.
Many of these are informational. You don't need to have the road rock salt on the agenda, for example.
But if it's going to come into more money, we're approving more money, I mean, wouldn't that be all part of business to show that we needed to get a different budget?
We do that under the dispersment part of the, of our agenda, and we have no control over the snows.
Right.
So it does not be, need to be under old business.
Okay, what about the streetlight conversion or the inspection report, the truck, the present-hail streetlight?
The streetlight conversion is under the agenda, I believe.
Interior lighting quotes.
No, it's not the street lighting. It's just, yeah, it's the interior.
That's nothing more than an update.
Now, we're missing the dumpsters.
Dumpsters are down here.
I mean, it's not listed as old business though, right there, right?
Administrative.
Well, you know, you receive these, these packets on Thursday or Friday. If you have a question, you have every right to do so and to voice your question and voice your concern at a time prior to this meeting.
Oh, we can do it during the meeting, too.
You can do it during the meeting, but it would be appropriate, and I think it would be very courteous if you would do it prior to the meeting.
Which I did.
And I have talked to, okay.
And I have brought it up before in the past as well, so I just, why, it's not changed.
So moving forward, we can...
So when you get a manager in this seat, then I guess the manager can take care of it. Is that okay with everybody?
Is it common practice if it is on old business on the last one, it continues on old business until it's gone? Not what are we putting on old and new and like that discussion, but if it's on old business, it stays on old business until correctly done? Is that a, I mean, that's a question.
That's what I've been trying to do.
So I think what we're doing is we're putting some on and off depending on what we discussed last month versus keeping it on until it's completed.
Until it's, so that there's a complete tracking all the way through until complete resolution.
It certainly helps keep track.
Right.
I think it's beneficial to the residents to see it on the agenda to know what in particular...
And if we, if we say we have nothing, nothing to add, then we just leave it on.
And it doesn't fall through the cracks.
It remains on the radar. As an open item.
And can we begin adding, and I'd have to go back to my old agendas, but after public comments on fifteen, that we put in trustee comments. I know it was at one point, and then we moved it up because we wanted to give our subcommittee updates earlier in the meeting, but it doesn't give us the opportunity to, to speak after the public's comments.
Pad it off. Prior to any adjournment, is that what you're...
Correct.
So you'd like an opportunity to speak, respond to the public after their commentary?
If so, if, right, because right now it doesn't allow for that. If so, if so desired, at least have it on the, on the agenda.
Well, you're part of public, and you can public, you can, you can speak right now under item fifteen.
Okay.
Any other comments?
I just would like to add, just from the, I know we have it, the Ortonville Wildlife Preservation Park boundary surveys, but what was also discussed in the January meeting was that we were going to come up with some signage, some park signage for the boundaries, right? So it wasn't just the survey piece of it because of the, because of the illegal activity going on inside the park. We were also talked about coming up with possible nice little park sign to, to put strategically placed in the perimeter. So I wanted to make sure that was also on, for discussion. Yes, yes, that's what I'm talking about. Yeah, but I'm talking about for, as we talk about it today.
Right.
So it was listed on, yeah, it was listed on our twenty-second minutes, so I just wanted to make sure we're not just talking about the survey quotes.
Duly noted.
And then we're not going to discuss anything about the survey or the master plan?
I mean, the, the master plan is out, and we have been receiving, how many have we received, Liz?
Over five hundred online responses, and we've received maybe a hundred or more at the office.
Other than, other than receiving survey forms, is there anything that anybody needs to discuss about it? Because it's not due to be turned in and reported. Every time we bring in McKenna, it's a $500 fee for them to show up.
I do have a question as far as the surveys being sent out. How many residents does that get sent out to? Is it just the village?
It, it was mailed out to every village resident.
And then more?
Every village address.
And then more? It wasn't addressed to individual addresses?
It was sent out bulk mailing.
Right.
Yeah, to postal customer.
To, to both residents and non-residents, correct?
If they're on a route that also overlaps the village, they would have received that.
Which is about two thousand residents that received that.
The direct mailing, two thousand residents? Okay, well...
I mean, we only have like five hundred and fifty residents in the village, right?
Well, it was mailed, like I said, it was mailed out to postal routes, and I think it may have been mailed to three because you have some overlapping the village and non-village residents. So if they were on the route and they're not a village resident, they would have received a survey, yes.
Okay.
So how would it be correct to say then that each village residence...
No, I'm talking about within the village.
Meaning home, received one copy of the survey?
Correct.
To fill out, and some town, Brandon Township residents also received a copy.
Correct.
That would be correct.
So I guess that my concern would be is if we're, we're putting a master plan together for the Village of Ortonville residents, then why are we sending a survey out to non-village residents?
Because we're trying to attract people into the village, and the, the interest that non-villagers state as to why they might consider coming into the village is critically important.
Well, I can speak for myself. I've lived here for 25 years. It doesn't mean I've lived in the village limits. I am a part of Ortonville for 25 years.
I, I get it, but I'm saying, I'm talking about...
But I lived into the limits at a certain point.
I'm talking on behalf of the village resident taxpayers. I do know, I realize there's value to non-resident input, but when it comes to putting together a master plan for the village taxpaying residents, then really, how much weight are you putting into a survey that the majority went outside the Village of Ortonville? So that would be my concern.
If we want the, if we want the village to grow and to attract people to shop in our shops, to potentially even live here, then we need to know what they want and what they think.
Well, then send it to all the Michigan residents, period, not just Brandon Township. The folks that are living in Brandon Township aren't going to sell their house in Brandon Township and then to move in the village because now you've put something in front of them. That, that doesn't hold water to me, Wayne. I, like, you know...
Well, you're one, you're one person, and I think we need to move on. Thank you.
So McKenna, McKenna thinks that there's value and we can bring...
Absolutely, absolutely.
We can get people to sell their homes in Brandon Township to move into, to the village.
We didn't say that. We're just looking for their input on what might draw people in here.
And not all of our business owners live in the village, and we would like to attract business owners to our village. I mean, I, I think we're part of a community. We are not an isolated space.
All of the, what, what did you say, Tanya? All of the...
Oh, I said we'd like to also draw business owners and people to shop here, not just to buy a home. There's multiple parts of our community. We are, we're not isolated. We're part of a broader community.
Okay, we need to, we need to approve the agenda. We haven't even gotten off our space here.
Okay, maybe you can just say that because I just have a couple of questions on the survey where the question is duplicate, identical duplicate question fifteen and seventeen, and if McKenna wrote this, when shopping, fif, like I said, fifteen and seventeen are identical except for no opinion, none or less, and then no opinion, not important, it, the relevant selections don't...
You know, this is exactly why I asked for input from the council on Friday. I asked you to call me.
I just got my survey in the mail.
And ask me if you had any questions ahead of time. I would have invited McKenna's people to be here.
I just got this in the mail. No, I just got mine in the mail.
You know, it's, it's common courtesy to notify myself, the village manager, our clerk or our treasurer, if you have questions ahead of time. I sent an email requesting your, your cooperation and your consideration so that we could prepare and look professional in front of our public. And I'm not seeing it. I'm sorry. I'm really fed up with what I'm seeing and the nitpicking that's going on with this council.
I don't know that, I agree that perception might be there, Wayne, but I think they're fair questions.
Well, I, you know...
Maybe, maybe, maybe they should have been brought up earlier, but they are fair questions.
Okay, I'm asking you to bring them up earlier. You have every opportunity to call the office. You have my phone number. You can call me. Mark Buxu called me. Karen Sliva called me. Mark Robinson called me. I did not hear from you, nor you.
I think the only thing I wanted to put on here was on, on the agenda, and it had to do with the Ortonville Wildlife Preservation Park signage, so I feel comfortable with me coming to a meeting prepared.
Well, if we're paying McKenna, it's just for, for this survey, it was just sloppy as far as questions, as far as editing, it's from that perspective.
Okay.
It's, so...
I've got nothing but good, good comments myself, so...
I did notice there was a problem with number seventeen. It, that question did not make sense to me.
That's because it's a duplicate of fifteen.
Well, maybe it should be on the agenda. We've got so much to talk about.
Well, we've got lots to talk about, but, you know, the professional was not here. I would have invited them.
Do we need it until we see the results? I mean, would that be the time where we bring them in?
Why don't we, why don't we...
Well, they're, they're scheduled as part of their contract to come in and go over the results. Now, if you want to accept the results, if you don't want the results, then throw the results away. But give the people an opportunity to address the situation and to comment on it. I mean, we could talk, we could spend, you know, Dan, you're all about spending less time on our meetings.
I'm all for that.
And when we're prepared, it's less time.
I, I agree.
Now, do we have an agenda that's approved or not?
Did we amend this agenda at all?
Yes, there was, uh, on item old business D, Dan wanted to talk about the signage under the wildlife preservation boundary survey quotes.
Okay.
Whether that's occurred or not, we do have items that are on the administrative update.
Okay, then I move that we approve the amended agenda here, or the amended as amended.
Support.
A motion by Councilman Sliva, supported by Councilman Bryce. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you. The agenda's approved. We have minutes from the January 22nd meeting. I will abstain. I was absent.
I, I don't believe you can abstain for that because we looked that up before. I mean, if you're not here, you still...
But as far as the minutes go, he, as far as the minutes, he can't...
Sure, from, from, right, but it's just from an approval, but no, you can't abstain from that.
Okay, we have a motion to accept the minutes.
I want, there was one topic that I wanted to talk about, and I'm sending a, please pass that down. And it's under the revision of draft village councilman, its old business, page five, section C, non-domesticated animal ordinance update, chickens. I would just like to add, in the interest of accuracy and clarity, the draft minutes should be revised by adding the following. The entire proposed ninety point thirty-six A and C were read by trustee Robinson, which included section C, five D, which states, "The coop may not be located with any side or front yard and may not be closer than one hundred feet from any dwelling on a neighboring property or ten feet from any property line." The reason I'm adding this is there's been information that has been printed in the paper that states that, that the coop would have to be one hundred feet from any property line, and that's not what the draft said, and that's not what the, what was read into the minutes. And it's, you know, it's ratcheting things up around here. It's misinformation, and I would like to clarify that in these minutes.
I'm glad you did because I've had people ask me about that, too.
Well, I, I know. You know, I think that temperatures around here have gotten a lot higher than they should have been, believe me.
It just goes to the accuracy of the minutes to include that.
It does.
Because I, we did discuss that.
Since I was not present, I do have a question anyway. Why, when you were using ninety-five percent of the Fenton ordinance, did you choose to ignore their twenty-five-foot rule and choose to make a more restrictive one hundred-foot rule, regardless of where you defined it from?
I, I did type that up. I'll, I take responsibility for that because I was getting feedback that the twenty-five limit was perhaps a bit too close, so I looked up other places to see what their distance from the coop was to the neighboring dwelling. And I did see that Holland was twenty-five foot, and then I saw the City of Lake Village, which allows three chickens, it was thirty foot, and then I saw that the Lansing and Chelsea were forty foot. Then I saw that Jackson, Michigan, was one hundred foot. So I'll take full responsibility.
I don't, I don't think, I think we had a discussion over that.
There was some discussion going on about it.
Quite frankly, we've got a tape measure out, right? And the tape measure says twenty-five feet, so I'm, I'm saying, any one of our residents, in the summertime, you open up your bedroom window, twenty-five feet, really, twenty-five feet could potentially have a, a chicken coop twenty-five feet away from your bedroom window while you're opening windows up. So is twenty-five feet too close? We thought it was too close for residents that, that, that didn't have chickens. Maybe the residents that do have chickens, it's fair to say, okay, twenty-five feet is okay from your own home, but this, this proposed ordinance says that one hundred feet from your neighboring house, not from the lot line, not from your own house, so if you drew a line from your neighbor's house to the nearest point of your chicken coop, it can't be any closer than a hundred feet. Now, I don't think that, to me, most of your chicken coops fall within that range, and we're just saying, heck, twenty-five feet. Anybody got your tape measure out? I know what a thirty-foot measure, tape measure is. Twenty-five feet is way too close, and I have, we have to sit, I think we sat there and talked, and we're, yeah, we are serious. We're not just talking about the chicken owners. We're, we're talking about... So anyways, so to Karen's point, she says that she, she takes it on, but I, I looked at it. I put the twenty-five feet out in my garage. It's less than the garage width of my, the inside of my garage. So therefore, we said twenty-five feet's way too close. That's what I, I commented.
They do, you know, the distance from the coop to the neighboring dwelling, it does vary different, you know, from place to place. Some, in some places, you know, they do an acreage restriction, but you, there's usually some type of restriction there, you know, so...
But none of this has to do with the agenda. Can we approve the agenda?
I agree. Well, well, he asked the question.
It goes into the minutes.
Agenda's approved.
You know, it's just the minutes.
Because she sent this to be added, but this isn't added, none of the, the hundred feet wouldn't go on here because it doesn't say how many chickens and the size, and none of that's on here.
It was in past minutes, and she wanted to clarify.
Right, that's what I'm saying, but it doesn't go on the agenda.
So this is fine. I mean, it, it wasn't like it wasn't discussed, and that's all she wants is a record of it because people are saying it's otherwise.
Okay, so we need a motion.
I'd like to add on page two, under dispersments, and I'm sorry, public comments, where it's talking about the luminaries and that the pictures are posted on the village website. I just would like community Facebook page inserted, community, so that, like, what, Facebook. And also, just to come, under the dispersments, just that I'd requested the trend reports by the treasurer using, you know, the BSNA software. And then on page four, at the very first, the very last sentence, I think you just have a word left out. I think you wanted to put village, Brandon Township with C, D, BG funds, and the Village of Ortonville.
I'm sorry, did you say page four?
Yes.
Which paragraph?
The very top, first sentence.
From the Village of Ortonville?
You say from, from the, from the Ortonville, so I think you wanted to, so I think you could just say...
Village of Ortonville.
And page five, under C, first paragraph, last sentence, just adding meeting, and there, and that another subcommittee meeting is scheduled.
Discussion in the hold about this meeting, or how did you want that to reach, Taryn?
Just adding meeting after subcommittee. There's a subcommittee meeting scheduled.
Oh, okay.
Sweet motion.
I make a motion that we support the amended minutes from January 22nd, Village of Ortonville, regular council meeting.
You mean to approve?
To approve it, yes.
Motion by Councilman Eshman to approve the amended minutes from the January 22nd, 2018, meeting, supported by Councilman Skornica. All those in favor of the minutes as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Minutes are accepted. Have acceptance items, and adding to your packet is the Village of Ortonville Planning Commission draft minutes. Just make sure that you do not miss those.
You just want us to read them?
Sure.
It's just information.
Just informational.
At our, at our leisure.
Yeah, well, you've got nothing else to do.
Okay.
Item seven on the agenda is dispersments. A dispersment's amount of $26,970.18.
I have a question on item sixteen. Was, were there other estimates received, or is that somebody that Bob happens to know?
I think this was, I'm not positive on this. I think this was a tree that needed to be removed.
Yeah, it was...
In, in expeditiously, so I don't know if...
Okay.
Other estimates were received.
Okay.
Okay, thirty-two, Detroit Salt Company. So we were able to find... So we were able to find salt and get it delivered?
No, that, that is actually from the seventh-
Okay.
...which was our last delivery through contract.
Because I know we are low on salt.
Yes.
What do we have left? Just-
Is the DPW person who made it?
No.
Good thing we've got some nice weather.
The supervisor indicated to me that we could make it through a couple of more snows if he is very sparing with the salt. But if I were able to get another vendor to deliver, that 50 tons would be adequate.
So are you saying we did find a vendor, or we have not yet found a vendor?
I have not found a vendor yet.
And then have we reached out to Oakland County or neighboring, and-
Yep, I've reached out. Everybody's in the same situation we are. Oakland County and Detroit Salt Company, it still has to go through executive review. Every time I call them, he tells me not to give up hope. And Morton Salt, which is who our vendor was last year, will flat-out not accept any new customers right now.
They just don't have the-
They don't have the-
-the salt to do it.
So pray for no snow.
Yeah, for sure.
Absolutely.
I'd do that, anyway.
Exactly. Okay, everything looks good to me. Number two, that was the, oh, however they bill it, 23.20% completed?
Correct.
So it's just based on the overall?
It's a partial bill.
So they just keep-
According to their contract.
Okay.
Actually, I see two bills for Detroit Salt Company. Okay?
Also, on 41, I don't know, perhaps you do this, but when we order paper, a lot of times when you buy the reams, you can, they have buy one, or buy two, get one free. Are we able to take advantage of that? Maybe Office Depot doesn't, but Staples does.
Oh, no, I haven't seen it.
Yeah, and there's rebate, so that may be for the future. I make a motion to approve our dispersments for February 26, 2018, in the amount of
Support. We have a motion on the floor by Councilman Scornica, supported by Councilman Eschman, to pay our bills in the amount of $26,970.18. Any further discussion? Hearing none. A roll call vote, please. Liz?
Batsu?
Yes.
Eschman?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Scornica?
Yes.
Sliva?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Number eight on our agenda. While we don't have the recipients with us tonight, they will be here next month, so I'll just briefly state that Brian and Sue Moore, it's a special situation, because it's not very often that a school district puts forth Teachers of the Year that are actually residents of our own community. So it's a special time. In this day and age, a lot of residents, a lot of teachers choose to live outside of the district, and they're very fine teachers, but they have their reasons, and for whatever reason, it's very rare that we have somebody who lives in the district, and not only that, but lives in our own village. So we're very pleased, and they live up in Crescent Hill. They're a neighbor of Glenises and several others that are in the room here tonight. And so they will be recognized, and they've been voted on as Teachers of the Year for our school district, and it's going on to the county level. And from there, they keep on going as long as they keep on winning. So we definitely appreciate their long-term residency and their activity and support of our community. So we have public comments, item number nine.
Could I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
I hate to butt in, but 6B, Brandon Ortonville Fire Department, fourth quarter end-to-end reports?
Yes, ma'am.
These are these, but chief is-
There is not a discussion at this point.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we were-
Yeah, the fourth quarter report are the little handouts. Chief is going to be on the agenda in a little while.
Okay, got it.
So public comments on agenda items. Anyone?
I'm sorry, you were getting up, I'm sorry. Yeah, a couple of things.
Your name, please.
Glenis, Upper Crescent Hill. Just going back to last month's meeting during the chicken vote for future reference, that when there is something that becomes personal, and there's a personal issue with it, the council people need to recuse themselves from that vote, and that would have been Tanya last month, if, because you had stated that you had chickens, and then you voted on the chicken issue, and you should have recused yourself, is just going forward. And then, at some point, if it's even allowed, or there's time, I would like to hear where the council stands individually, and their thought process on why they're voting the way that they have been with, in regards to the chicken issue. And since you guys brought up the surveys, I received my survey from the school district on my email on February 6. I was pretty surprised that I hadn't received anything personally, which I didn't get till just the other day, like Colleen. And while it may not be, while I was surprised that it went to everybody, including the people who live in Oxford and attend Brandon Schools, and what they would have, why they would have input into our village, I was surprised by that. I was taken aback by that. So if, to your point, Wayne, if you're looking to get a lot of people's input for the downtown, then maybe the survey could have been better served by offering it to the village residents first. Here's your deadline, so that the Planning Commission and McKenna can all look at it and say, okay, this is what the village residents are looking at. And then the rest of the community could have a right to say what they think could be done as well. I was just, I do agree that it seemed to be a little backwards, and now there's going to be maybe some confusion as to if you're out in Oxford Township, or if you live in the village, and who has what to say about what. So that was surprising. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good point, actually.
Yes, it is a good point. I didn't think about the confusion that it could cause when you start analyzing the data, so, very good point.
Any others?
My name's Patrick Simpson. I just wanted to bring up a point when you're, because you have an update on the chicken ordinance. Just wanted to, again, reiterate that, you know, if you can focus on the problems, the actual complaints, and resolving those, and then maybe considering changing the, you know, the bill to be more community-friendly to the people that you're hearing back from, like, maybe not take the highest, you know, footage limit of all the towns that were looked at. Maybe there's a more happy medium, you know? And considering, you know, maybe the amount of chickens that people have, and, you know, coming closer to that number than just stating that, you know, there needs to be this certain number. I just think that maybe if you could take consideration of what you're hearing back, and try to come to a good compromise, you know, I think that would be beneficial to everyone. And like you mentioned earlier about the situation getting heated, maybe cool things down a little bit. And with all due respect about the councilwoman not voting on that, if she didn't vote on it because she has chickens, then everyone that didn't have chickens, it seems like they wouldn't be able to vote on it either, because they didn't have them. So, but, you know, but that's all.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much for your comments.
On that note, I do have a question, as far as, I really don't know how many chickens people, was there eight families that were in question? And then I've heard also-
That we know of.
That we know of, right.
Eight families that were given a letter.
Right. I mean, so I've heard in other meetings, I sat out there back in, what, October, November, and I heard somebody say, well, there's more than that. But how many chickens are the average owner, do they have?
They're not going to tell you, because they're afraid.
Okay.
Well, they're worried for their pets. That's the only reason.
They're asking to be allowed to do pets.
They're asking to be able to, ask to keep what they have.
Yes.
They don't want to have to get rid of their pets.
It just also-
Okay, let's keep it under control, folks. Thank you. Thank you. We have other things to contend with tonight.
Yeah.
Okay.
My name's Linda Hayes. I live at 690 Oakwood Road. And again, I'm going to talk to the council, again, about, my husband and I walk this village almost every day. Only one place have we seen where chickens have been uncontained, and never any smell. I don't, if I had these people as my neighbors, I would not be offended. I would not be afraid to open up my windows. I get more smell from somebody down on Church Street burning garbage than I do from any of the animals or the chickens here in the village. And I just feel like you are punishing everyone for a few people that have not complied with, to me, is just common courtesy to your neighbor. And those people are the ones that should be addressed, and not everybody else that's got chickens and just say, well, we're just going to flat-out tell you, people, no chickens. It's not fair to them. Some of these people, that's their pets. So how would you feel if somebody came and said, get rid of your dog? And asking my neighbor? I have one neighbor, I don't care what we would ask her. She would never say, it's okay. So that's just the way I feel about it. I feel this has gone on long enough. Stop it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Cherie Wybley, when the council-
Sorry, your name?
Cherie Wybley. I live on Ball Street. The only thing I'd like to bring up, when you came up with, okay, we're not going to find you for having chickens, we're going to come up with an ordinance, we're going to let the planning committee come up with an idea. All of us laid back, you know, rested back a little bit, because we were confident you were going to, you were going to listen to the planning committee on a chicken ordinance. You never gave them a chance to speak, when nobody was here, and even the president wasn't here. Then you come up with an ordinance on your own, you don't know anything about chickens. Why don't you come and learn something about the chickens? It takes months to grow chickens. And an animal can wipe them chickens out one day. I spent eight months feeding and taking, caring, and doing everything. The whole issue started as a no roaming, no roosters. You've added all this stuff, you've blown it up, you've made people mad at you. You know, why can't there be any compromise? And look at the issue at hand. The issue was no roaming and no roosters. You didn't have people complaining about smell coming in my house, salmonella, and all this other stuff. All this stuff was brought in, and all this stuff added. The whole thing, the whole thing started, roosters and no roaming. And on a good note, I want to leave a good note, thank you for the light on our street, because of kids, it's a lot safer over there now. So.
You're welcome.
I am going to say that two village managers asked the village council to come up with an ordinance that allows chickens. And that's why we've been going on this track. I do realize that the roaming was the real issue, or the real problem.
Any other comments from the public? Hearing none.
I just wanted to make a comment on the survey. And if I remember right, and I filled mine out a few days ago, it does ask where you're a resident of. So it's going to be very easy to sort out where people lived. So it asked Brandon Groveland and the village. So it's not going to be a big deal to find out where the people lived that filled out the survey.
My name is Ron Sutton from 57 Church Street.
Thank you.
My name's Linda Brooks. I live on 38 Church Street. I'm actually Wayne's neighbor. I don't know if I can speak on something that we haven't discussed yet that is on the agenda, which is the park.
You can speak to it, sure.
Okay. I just wanted to speak to the fact that I was shocked to find out that that park even existed, when I've lived here for over 25 years. And I'm shocked that, you know, being a village resident, that I didn't have, no, I haven't, you know, do I even have access to it? Is it village property? Does that mean I can go on it, or I can't go on it? It's just one of the issues that, you know, you live in this village, and you trust people, and then you hear this thing, and you're finding out that, you know, people have abused it, used it for their own benefit, and you didn't even know it was something that you might have been able to go out and explore. I like to walk around in the woods and explore, and I just wondered, I just want to speak to the fact that I think we need to be open about things like that park and any other easements that we are allowed to walk on, that we are unaware of, because they're not marked, and they're not, people are not made aware of them.
Yeah, there was, I believe, about 10 years ago, Dan, correct me if I'm wrong, where there was a request to actually develop that trails, but it was decided not to do that.
I believe it was the library, before the library was even built, that they were proposing that piece of property to build a library there.
So, anyway, that was abandoned, and since then, there's not been any formal process to make it walkable, per se.
Okay.
At least from the streets. You know, there's people that have walked in from their own private property on Crescent Hill, but not from Mill Street.
They walk, they walk in off of Mill Street, too. There are trails, but it's, they're natural trails, right? They're not developed trails, and that's where the designation-
But am I allowed to go walk that property?
Absolutely, absolutely.
And how do I access it?
Through the woods. It's no different than going to state land and saying, how do I access state land? You pull over, you park it out, and you enter.
There's no signage, there's, and it's-
About this wide, the opening.
And there's no hunting on that, right? Not even bow hunting?
Not anymore.
Not anymore.
So we need to make, right.
Yeah, I mean, I remember the bow hunting incident, and I didn't really understand where that was going on. And I do also want to just reiterate my support of village people being able to own chickens. I, like Linda, I walk a lot around this town. I walk with my dog. I do not smell anything. The only issues I ever remember of foul, wild, wild, the birds wandering around is over, I believe it's James Street, where they used to cross the street all the time. And right next to the village funeral home, we used to have ducks living there, and they would cross the street all the time. And I agree, those incidents, they should be contained, but that's why you have an ordinance, so that you can enforce them. And I feel we need ordinances on dog walkers who do not pick up after their animals. I don't even know if they exist. I went to the website to try to find all of our ordinances, to see, do we have ordinances? And what is the penalty for some of those other items? But I do want to say I am in support of chickens.
Thank you, Linda. Any others? Moving on, items from trustees, and I guess technically, for a point of discussion, it could be subcommittees, it could be anything you want to bring up, but the agenda does say subcommittee updates, and it always has, but, so, that being said, comments, questions?
I do. Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
No, no, I'm, you're talking about items for trustees?
Yes.
I mean, do you want to go this way?
Sure.
Okay. My subcommittee is the Ortonville Historical Society in the Old Mill. And they've been meeting somewhat informally, usually they don't meet this time of the year, because the Old Mill's not heated, but they've been meeting somewhat informally, because this year is the 50th anniversary of the Ortonville Historical Society. And they run the Old Mill. I'm sure most of you have been down there. And they're working on a commemoration for the Ortonville Historical Society, which will take place probably the very first part of August. And I think we should work on, perhaps, doing something to support them in this, a lot of things to support them in this commemoration, because the Old Mill is a very, very special place. I mean, there aren't very many communities that have a museum that is that wonderful, you know? They've just done a super job, you know, in historic preservation and in- They've just done a, a, a super job, you know, in historic preservation and in running that museum. Plus, these people are out there, every time we have any kind of event going on in, in the village, I mean, they're there, they've got the Old Mill open, you know, they're serving hot dogs, they're serving chips, they're serving ham soup and they're serving, you know, beverages. They have things for sale, they have baked goods there. So I, I'm really looking forward to this commemoration of the, you know, Ortonville Historical Society, the 50th anniversary and, and we want to support them very much in this because they just do a super job.
To your point, Karen, one of, one of the ways that we might be able to do so is part of our capital improvement plan, our CIP. Chief Koopas and I have had a couple of discussions about the fact that we, or that the historical society basically has partially installed a fire suppression system in that building. And right now, the building does not have a water supply to it.
I know that.
And that's, that could be as much as a hundred thousand dollar plus project to put in a well. And that would be something that I think would be, something that would be a benefit because if that building goes up in flames, it's going to be gone that quick.
We're going to relive our history.
I have a question on that. There's that. Do they call that a dry hydrant right there at the river?
Yes.
Okay. And it's still a well. I mean, is there any reason why we can't tap into that and utilize that?
The dry hydrant doesn't have a pump to it. So the, the plan is the fire trucks are going to park there and draft from there when the building's on fire. The, the point to a suppression system is, is that there's a pump already there. So that way if the sprinkler head goes off, there's water in the building before we even get notified.
I understand, but what I was, can we just somehow add a pump and draw right from that hydrant?
No, you can't do that. It's not a hydrant. It's just a, a pipe that's stuck in the ground that's access to the crack. That's it.
I didn't know if we could tap into, that's the question I had.
You can't tap into it. There's nothing there to tap into.
So this is something that council, this, we may want to, as we're developing our capital improvement plan, have that type of thought process in the back of our minds.
Yeah.
Thank you, Karen. Mark, anything?
The fire board did not meet. However, Chief Koopas is here. So as soon as we're done here.
Okay.
I think he should be next.
Personnel committee has been meeting. We received nine applicants for the village manager position. We interviewed four and we are having a special meeting this Wednesday at 7:00 PM to bring the one candidate forth to the council.
And also to your point, I think that it would be beneficial that we change the venue from the village conference office to this particular boardroom.
If it's available.
Is it available? Did we verify that, Liz?
I have not verified.
Because we usually just have this question, yeah.
Otherwise, otherwise, perhaps in the old town hall. Because when we, when we have seven board members plus the applicant, plus our recording secretary, there's room for no public. So that would be my only comment. And I do appreciate the, the work of the personnel committee. It's, it's not an easy task. So thank you for your efforts. Tanya, Dan and Colleen. Speaking of subcommittee assignments, we, we are going to do some shuffling for the balance of 2018. Tanya has agreed to become the planning commission liaison and Mark Robinson is going to become the streets liaison. And also, I believe the Parks and Recs are going to do both, Mark?
First I heard about that.
They haven't met very often, but we'll, we'll talk.
They don't meet unfortunately.
But Mark originally intended on doing this on the first Tuesday of the month, but his schedule has tightened up the first of the month, so he's not available as, as the liaison to the planning commission. So Tanya's going to be taking that position over. So again, thank you, Tanya and also Mark. The DDA has been meeting with, as part of, part of a, an outreach and a planning process for public relations. Matt Jenkins, our DDA director, myself and Dr. Outlaw, along with Brian Moore at the high school and Kathy Thurman have met twice with respect to having a coordinated public relations campaign for the community to promote all that's good and great about not only the charter township of Brandon, but the Brandon School District and the village of Ortonville. And the goal is to attract young families to the Ortonville community. That's why the survey is part of this component. So the, the DDA is striving diligently to promote and grow our business district. And as Councilman Butsu has suggested in the past, the current, within the current infrastructure, in other words, we're not ever talking about sewers on a community-wide basis again. And probably in my time, it's just too cost of, just too cost prohibitive. So we're going to, we're going to, and Mark Butsu challenged us maybe about a year ago, I believe, that, that we actually look and operate and try and bring and attract new business within our current infrastructure capabilities. So I think it's starting to pay some dividends. We're getting some good occupancy in the downtown area. We've got a, a new smoothie business next to the, between the pub and, we've got two new businesses down there now. So what other, what other new businesses do we have? Do you recall? I'm sorry?
Beck Gruber.
Beck Gruber, yeah, yeah. So, so it is, it is, we can, we are, we do have some difficulties again with the health department because they're not allowing us to have occupancies because the systems are antiquated. So they are what they are.
What kind of, what kind of businesses would the health department kind of be okay with?
Practically nothing. Practically nothing, quite frankly. It's a.
Well, because you have the pet thing there that they are.
Yeah, anybody that doesn't use a lot of water.
Public bathroom.
Yeah. Bathrooms and so forth, you know, so.
What I've seen in, in older villages like where, where we live, a lot of the structures are remodeled into a very nice office space, like not big offices, but Glennis, where Glennis.
Like service, service businesses.
Yeah, like, like the insurance company. Where the facade is really nice. It's, it's old fashioned. They may have just a couple of sales rep areas, but it generates people coming in to visit and that's a good thing, I think.
Yeah, the old doctor's office building, it used to be Dr. Shane's and then Dr. Lowenstein. Because they have an occupant, occupant upstairs. Two occupants upstairs, two, two apartments? That is enough capacity for Oakland County Health Department. They will allow nobody in the first floor. And the idea was originally to have maybe some incubation, incubators where you get some small businesses that want to start and, and have an office that they might meet a client once a month or something on a ad hoc basis. And then, but the Oakland County Health Department won't allow that even because the two apartments upstairs, which are paying the bills for the, the property owner are, are maxing out the, the system. And in that particular location, that particular building, the, the septic field is actually between the two buildings and that's why that little entrance to Crosman Park is gravel and not pavement. Because you, you can't pave over a septic field. So. Okay. See, Dan, you're taking care of.
Yeah, ditto on the, the personnel committee, but I do want to ask you, Wayne, since John has left and he's been helping us abroad, if you will, have you been given any updates on the progress of the CIP? Because remember, we were, we gave him that task to work on the CIP as part.
Yes, he, he is working on it. I have not seen any results. He's had connectivity issues with his computer systems, traveling around, and I have encouraged him to go to the local libraries and, so beyond that, is that about where we're at?
Yes, and he'll be traveling on Thursday again, so.
Can I just put the CIP as?
It's a capital improvement plan that I referenced about the, the, the Old Mill. It's, it's basically a structured plan that we would have to have in order to go after certain grants that would prioritize different places where we'd like to spend any surplus money that we might have.
You mean like sidewalks down to Narren Park?
Yes.
Crossed our yard.
Yes. It's capital improvement plan.
So we could access downtown? We can't get to downtown.
I understand.
We have to cut across.
It also include like road improvement as well.
Tanya, anything?
Are you done?
Yes, okay.
It's just kind of a joke because when we moved in here three years ago, we were supposed to have sidewalks to your report to Narren Park, so.
I don't have anything committee wise. I would just like to once again thank the DPW for their wonderful help during all those terrible storms and even once everything was clear, a lot of people could walk immediately. It's not just driving. It's, you know, you drive a place out, people can't even drive. And here we can walk on our streets again. So I really appreciate what they do.
Okay. The last meeting adjourned so abruptly that I was not able to respond to the accusations made and would like to take a brief moment to do so. Today is only my third month on the village council. I've also been made PC liaison and have yet to be at a PC meeting. I had met with Melanie Nivelt for an hour and a half on Friday, January 19th, which 30 minutes were spent on the chicken ordinance, at which time I was instructed not to share the information she gave me. I told her in person and I have it documented in emails to the entire PC that I do not know how I'm supposed to update to the council if I can't share this information. I also said that I was not comfortable doing this, especially since I had never been to a PC meeting. I asked that either Lee, she or Lee Palsham be there to provide updates, being that the council is expecting this information, yet nobody showed up. But they all showed up last Wednesday. I will not sit on this council and have my excellent name and character slandered by Melanie Nivelt or Larry Hayden with the implications of misrepresenting the PC at a meeting. I mean, every week I've seen something posted in the citizen with my name and everything else, you know? They couldn't bother to show up. Oh, sorry. There was an email dated on 1-1 where Melanie says, as long as the council understands that they are not dictating what the planning commission comes up with, and I'm okay with them submitting their thoughts. I asked the council why there was not more dialogue between the council and PC if they resent the council so much. How is it the council commissioned them to such a task and there's, it's not theirs to do anyways, according to the attorney, this is not a zoning issue? How did the council know this and put me in such a bad spot? This ordinance has been misquoted so many times and Tanya, I mean, I'm sorry, Karen has corrected it a little bit about the, the footage and everything else. I mean, I've heard so many variations and they've all been wrong and I thank you for correcting that earlier. I was put between council and planning commission and caught in the middle. Can't hand all this on me. My name has been the one main one that's been slandered through all this. You know, I'm the new guy, you know? My, my, my character was attacked and everything else and dragged through the mud, which I don't appreciate. It would be fantastic for the council to voice a correction on the point and redeem my name.
You were thrown off the deep end. He has not even been to any kind of training yet. He was thrown off the deep end and that was unfair.
It was not my intention to push any agenda with that chicken ordinance. I seen something going on. I sat out there in the, in the, in the public with everybody else back in October, November and, and I seen that this has been dragged on for what, eight months or so? And all I was trying to do is take something that people did not have, didn't have the right to have chickens for 35 years, you know, and I was trying to push it forward to where you did, you know, and find a compromise in the process. I wasn't there to, you know, trying to push my agenda. I got everybody, I, I forwarded all that information to everybody here on the council and the planning commission before I brought that all up. So. No surprise to anybody. All right, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you very much.
The administrative updates.
Did you want me to read them?
No.
Okay. I won't.
Okay, the first item is the Mill Street Crescent Hill Drive street, streetlight. The pole has been installed. It was installed in the wrong spot. DTE was given instructions as to where it should be moved because we received feedback from a former council member that it was in the, the spot where a proposed future sidewalk may go eventually. So they're in the process of coming back out and relocating it and this will be taking place shortly. But in the meantime, last night, Bob Hoxwell, our DPW supervisor was out there before dawn and lights up the intersection very nicely where it sits and seems to be doing a good job. We did have some feedback from one individual that was concerned that it would be, would create too much light for one of the neighboring houses and that does not seem to be the case. So. Anyway, that's, that's where we're at there. The old Dodge, the black Dodge pickup, we received two bids on that. The highest bidder for that vehicle that should have been scrapped went to, went to a gentleman by the name of Dave Penley and his high bid was $677 for a piece of scrap pickup.
Wayne, I have a question on the Mill Street light.
Yes, ma'am.
We pay Ms. Dig a fee? Why did we not have Ms.?
It had nothing to do with Ms. Dig. It had, had.
The concern is the drains, when they decide what's where and they look at all the plans, would that, the storm drains would be on there and you couldn't dig there.
That place, that particular location.
Don't we have to have them before? It's law. So why didn't we have them out? Because we paid for Ms. Dig to already do it.
We did.
We are Ms. Dig for the village. Bob is Ms. Dig for the village.
Okay.
So he.
He actually does it for them?
Yes.
Okay. Just for the village, not for the house?
Correct.
Okay. I'm with you. Thanks. That's why I asked.
The next item is we have mandatory bridge inspections. We have three, three bridges in the village. Actually, four if you count Granger Road. But the South Street Bridge by the, between the footbridge and the library, there's a mandatory inspection at $500 per bridge for the inspector to do that. And also the bridge near the Old Mill at Mill Street where Kersley Creek. So it looks like we've got a expenditure of about another thousand dollars for those inspections. And the anticipated maintenance costs for those two bridge repairs and updates is 77,000. And through the local bridge program, the village's share of the construction cost is 5% of that. Costs, 5% of 77,000. So however, the village is responsible for 100% of all the design and engineering fees. So, and this will be included as part of our CIP, our capital improvement plan moving forward in the near future. I think this is for the year 2021. I think, uh, this is for the, uh, year twenty-twenty-one. So it's a few years out, but this bridge, the bridges have to be repaired according to state specifications. Next item, uh.
Can I ask a question on that note?
Yes, sir.
So, the village is responsible for all that mu, all that money, right, for the inspection, is that correct? I mean, that doesn't get shared between that and the, in the.
Well, the seventy-seven thousand is the actual cost of the maintenance. The engineering, uh, I don't know that we have a price on that yet, do we?
On the engineering?
Right.
We probably wouldn't until twenty-twenty or twenty-twenty-one.
Okay.
Okay. I'm just wondering why it's not also shared with Brandon Township, because within the village, we have Brandon Township, you know what I mean? That's all I'm asking, for the, for the expenditures.
Yeah, well, everybody uses it. People from Groveland Township comes in and uses, uses the road, the roads too.
No, I, I, I guess you misunderstood my question.
Yeah.
All right, I'm just wondering why we're stuck with the only, you know, the main part of the village.
We're the primary, uh, we're the primary municipality.
Okay.
That's involved with that. If it were, uh, if it were, uh, the, the bridge, uh, at Oakwood Road, that would be shared. Because that's partial, that, that's the dividing line between Brandon Township and the village, so there would be some sharing involved there.
Or if you're referring to the one on Granger, I would think that would be the same.
Yes, and that's what we call major roads versus local roads. Local roads are the roads that are interior to the village, major roads are the boundary roads.
Okay, thank you.
And then I have one other question then, um, when you refer to the M.DOT local bridge program applications, is this a, a grant type of? It is.
Oh, absolutely.
All right, it doesn't say the grant, so I just wanted to.
Yeah, they don't use the word grant, but, you know, we're sharing, our, the actual cost is only five percent, uh, roughly thirty-six hundred dollars of, of a seventy-seven thousand dollar projected maintenance cost.
This is in Oakland, through Oakland County then? Or is it a state?
No, it's M.DOT, that's, that's the, that's Michigan, yeah, M.DOT.
Wayne, I've got one question also, after.
Okay.
Um, on the bridges, uh, does it, does Row, they've inspected these bridges for years, I think? And, um, don't they have engineering already in place? It's a static bridge, it's not going to change.
But it has, the, but it has to be totally inspected all over again. I, I asked that same question, is anything carryover? And, no, it has to be totally re-inspected. Because they do, they're static, but yet they do deteriorate.
Well, I just, when I, when I see design and engineering, that means something a little bit different to me as far as, not so much inspection, but it should already be engineered.
And it's designed and built, designed and built, yeah, yeah. Good question, though. The two thousand seventeen scrap tire grant, Phase Two, which includes Cedar Street and Colehouse Streets. If you recall from last year, we had a, a projected, uh, budget from our engineer that the bids should come in around two hundred and six thousand, with our portion being fifty percent of that, or a hundred and three thousand. What happened was is that, uh, we, we had to defer the bid process until the fall of last year, and then the bids came in at three hundred and thirty-one thousand, uh, which was way over budget. So, we deferred until the spring, uh, we just had bid openings last, uh, Wednesday, the twenty-first, and, uh, I'm happy to report that the, uh, the low bid was a hundred and ninety-eight thousand, three twenty-four. And, uh, our engineer thought that it would be at about two hundred and, another ten percent on top of our original budget, so he, he said to expect, uh, bids at around two hundred and twenty. And we did have a couple in that range, but we did have this, this one bid that is at one hundred and ninety-eight, three twenty-four. So, uh, it's a little premature, but it looks like it's, it's a good bid, it's been verified by our engineer. Uh, he's gone through it line by line, he's found no holes in it. I will say that, uh, in, in trying to orient Mark Robinson the other day, as part of that bid opening, uh, to get him involved in the streets with myself, um, uh, when we looked at the list of bidders, uh, I was pleased that, that Mark, uh, made a reference to the fact that he did have a conflict of interest in that, uh, process, since his daughter was an employee of the.
Daughter-in-law, yeah.
Daughter-in-law of the, the second to lowest bidder. Uh, so, but as it's turned out, uh, the approval by our engineer is such that, uh, we more than likely will be asked to accept. As a matter of fact, uh, our engineer is recommending that we do accept the low bidder, and that's with, um, TG Prees at a hundred and ninety-eight thousand, three twenty-four, so we're pleased that it is, it is, uh, below budget, so.
Do you know where they're out of?
Not off the top of my head.
Just curious, I, okay, I can find out.
To your point, I've.
Amelie City.
Amelie City, okay.
Actually, they have a very, very good reputation.
Were they invited by Row then, took the bid? How did they get on the bid list?
Well, there's, it's, it's published.
Okay.
It's published. And there were, uh, we had two, four, six, there were eight potential bidders, and we received four bids.
And then as part of Row's recommendation, they vet out, if you will, that company to be viable and.
Correct.
Okay.
They confirmed that they can in fact handle it financially, they confirm that, uh, every element is there. Uh, the bids ranged from a hundred and ninety-eight, three twenty-four up to two hundred and seventy-seven, six forty-three.
I, I have one question, though, and we had discussed this earlier. This particular bid right here, they don't have their own facility, and the engineer that was involved, did he have any further comments about any concerns about them having, not having their own facility, you know, for supplies and that? Apparently, they're gonna get it from another source.
No, uh, let's see, I've got, his letter just came in today, so I, you know, it was a little premature to put it on our agenda.
What do you, what do you mean by, by not having their own facility, I don't.
Well, I wasn't able to attend the meeting, but when Wayne brought me up to speed, the, the second lowest had their, all their own facility, and that was the one I had the, the conflict with, of interest. But I only bring that up because that was one item that was pointed out by the engineer as far as them having their own resources, I guess, you know, so I'm just concerned.
Yeah, it, it's sometimes when you're talking about supply of the material, then it gives you more flexibility.
But if Row, if Row's backing this company, and they've done the research on this company, and they're recommending it, then we would hold them accountable, right?
Absolutely, absolutely. This is the letter that just came in, uh, enclosed, please find a copy of the bid tabulation, the bid tabulation is a line-by-line evaluation, comparing all the bidders side by side. All bids opened and read at the bid opening on February twenty-one have been reviewed and audited. Uh, TG Prees, uh, paving company was a low bidder, as I indicate. Uh, Row Professional Services Company has worked satisfactorily with this contractor and their subcontractors in the past. It is our recommendation for the Village of Ortonville to award the two thousand eighteen local paving project to TG Prees Paving Company. That's their, that's their written recommendation.
And did you receive the bid tabulation? Did you receive that?
Yes, I have.
Okay, we didn't get a copy of that, could we get a copy of that, please, Liz?
Sure. We are not on a time constraint with respect to this project, but we do wanna, it's been advised that we do get in line with their, uh, construction project. As, as those of you who know the village, you know that the only problem is, is that there's a lot of people, a lot of parents that use Cedar Street for parking, uh, for access to the ballfields this summer. And, uh, the project is about a three-week-long project, and they may have some problems getting into a particular field.
Sooner the better.
So, yeah. I did talk with Fred Waybrand today about the, uh, the timelines for the fields, and he said after July twenty-first, uh, there's no activity all in those fields. So we could, we could theoretically defer until, uh, July and August to do the whole, to do the, to do the project.
But again, it's best to get on the schedule now.
Well, I'm gonna talk, I, I haven't had a chance to, to talk with the, with the contractor, uh, to find out their workload at, at the moment, so. And I intend, uh, you know, when we do, uh, hire a new village manager, then we'll, we'll coordinate and bring that person up to speed so that we can, uh, make a concerted effort in that regard. Uh, the dumpsters. Okay, update. And I'll read this for the, for the people in the audience, "At the direction of, uh, interim manager John Lyons, and because the village office is in violation of their own dumpster screening ordinance, letters were not sent out to businesses and homes in violation of the ordinance until the village can become compliant themselves. Although the village is still out of compliance, the village president, myself, I directed the clerk to go ahead and send notices of violation, letters to the businesses and, and homes to be known in violation." And, uh, I've talked with, uh, a couple other council people, and, you know, we have some issues, again, about this taking too long, far too long for this process. I did ask our building official to come and address his, his commentary to both my, uh, feelings, and I know Mark Butsu has been very vocal and, and as has Mark Robinson. So Bill, would you come up to the podium, please?
So, just, uh, prior to Bill talking, um, did the mem, letters go out, did the memo go out yet, or no?
No.
Okay, good. Uh, the reason I say that is that, you know, we were talking about, uh, things like this taking too long, and I just wanted to make sure there was some timing around, uh, just obviously for the village to comply as well, but, uh.
Well, part, you know, and, and Bill will address the issues. Uh, number one, uh, to his credit, uh, Mark Butsu has gone out and done and provided a, a listing of some of the people that are in violation, some of the businesses that are in violation. And, uh, so I do, I do compliment on that regard, so go ahead, Bill.
That, that is helpful, however, from an enforcement standpoint, um, only having a few and not a thorough compiled list of the violations that are around town leave you or subject the village to some, uh, look, how do I put this gently? Uh, possible litigation issues. So, my, my understanding was when, when Mr. Butsu had offered to do this, that it was going to be a thorough compiled list. The problem is if you don't have as many as you can find, but you admit that there, it's a start, is an issue whereby selective enforcement could become an issue there. I'm not saying it will, but you open yourself to that type of subjectivity. I don't disagree that the issue needs to be resolved and it needs to start, however, um, well, as we all know, there's still frost in the ground in many places, and especially where people drive. So even if you sent letters out now, people can't comply or won't be able really to comply until the frost is out of the ground so they can start putting posts in, or they can start putting footings in. So I think now is the time to finish our list, get it as complete as we possibly can, so that if anybody comes up and says, "Well, so-and-so doesn't have his dumpster done," we can go, "Thank you very much, we didn't notice that, but we do have what we believe is a complete list." So, I, I would just offer that as something that we should probably finish first before we start sending out letters of violation.
Some question, Bill. Doesn't all the businesses have to submit some sort of plans, you know, to you prior to being approved?
Correct.
Right, so, how long do you anticipate being able to visit each and every one of these businesses? I, I'm just thinking, you know, getting the groundwork going, and, and having an accurate list, but, I mean, that's gonna take a while in itself.
And it possibly can, but this would be, uh, how a couple of years ago, I believe it was, I suggested that the ordinance be changed to allow for administrative approvals with notification of the planning commission after the fact. This would fit into that category where it would be an administrative review and approval process to know that it meets it. So it, you know, that kind of timing isn't a long time. I, I don't disagree that the, that we should get it together really quick, but at the same time, let's be complete as we go along to try to do that.
I wanna, can I jump in?
Yeah.
I'm a very complete person.
Okay.
And there's a reason why I did that. I was looking at the dumpsters on our main thoroughfares, people coming in, not on the, the building, that it's hard to see. The thought was to dress up the town a little bit, um, and, and take care of the immediate eyesores that probably most of us have seen, and we've seen them for so long that we just forgot about it.
I understand.
So the, my, my solution would be to send out a letter to all businesses.
Check.
All of them, that way, the letter's there.
That, that's, that's a valid statement.
And that way it's done, and, and, because I, I don't wanna be selective at all. My intent was, if I have somebody visiting me, and they're driving down and a pizza box hits them from Jet's dumpster, you know, because of the wind, I don't want that.
If you sent out a generic letter that says, "Oh, by the way, you may not know, but we have an ordinance that says this and this and this, and if you comply, thank you very much, but if you don't, this is what's gonna happen later," I don't have a problem with that. But because you've sent it to all the businesses. Where I'm having difficulty is sending letters, or I'm just suggesting to you, you probably don't wanna send pointed letters out to only a few, but do it all. So the, the start of that would be awesome to send that type of a generic letter to all the businesses, and that'll give you time to narrow down your field and know which ones, and then get more specific about the violation when we know that.
What I was, what I was, wanted to address is the letter has to be, or could be, very simple. If you have a dumpster, it has to be shrouded on three sides, it's that easy.
I usually include within my letters the part of the ordinance that's impacted, because this is a precluder to, see, the bottom line is if you have somebody that doesn't wanna comply, this is gonna end up in the court process. And in that court process, you need to be very specific about what you're sending people notices for, so, but that's easier to do in a generic letter, too.
That's the thought.
I have a, are, were you done, Mark?
Yeah.
Okay, I just have two more questions. First of all, how many feet from a road, sidewalk, whatever, I mean, what's the general law for that rule?
Where it would be.
How many feet from, you know, does it, can a dumpster be from a road?
A roadway.
It, it's part of the approval process, there are, your schedule of regulations takes all your commercial properties, and it's part of a planning commission approval, there isn't quote-unquote "a minimum." Now, obviously, you have site clearance distances, um, from a dumpster's standpoint, usability becomes a big factor. I know why Jet's Pizza dumpster doesn't get used. That kid's not gonna walk out in knee-deep snow in the middle of winter to go five hundred yards to find a dumpster. I mean, that, that's not brain surgery, that's just reality. So let's get that dumpster, even though it may be not be optimal, optimal, but let's get it closer to the building, screen it, and put it in a place that'll get, actually get used. Now, if, if it isn't used, now we've got issues with the owner to require the tenant to comply, so.
One of the big concerns, if you talk to anybody over at First Impressions next door, is that when they even go to pull out of their parking lot, and when the covers, nine times out of ten, the covers are hanging wide open, they say, when they go to pull out.
They can't see.
They cannot see, it's obstruction of view, so it's a safety hazard, too, you know?
Correct. Clearly, during that approval process, I'm going to use a couple of different tools when I go through to administratively review what they submit, to make sure that it, it doesn't affect site, site distances relative to your accesses to roadways, even internal drives within the complex, and those types of things. And of course, the best place to put a dumpster, in my opinion, is where you don't see it. I mean, who wants to sit and look at a dumpster?
Especially a bright green one.
Yeah, well, that, that's a company issue, I can't get them to paint it different.
Well, the skirting will help prevent that.
Yeah, that will. So I was, I'm just concerned, at this point in time, um, how that process was getting started and that we may be. and that we may be starting in a situation where the village could get itself in kind of a bind. So let's, let's back up and readjust and work at this from an enforcement perspective also.
Yeah, I like Mark's idea of a generic letter to all, all the people, so I think we can go ahead and complete that process.
Most of my first-time letters to potential violators of the ordinance is I give them the benefit of the doubt, hey, yep, probably didn't know. So here's what the rules are. Well, if they don't follow the rules, okay, well, you now know what the rules are and you didn't follow it, now we got a different story on our hands.
Now, what about a time constraint on that generic letter?
My usual is anywhere from 15 to 30 days, depending on what the difficulty is to get the resolution. The whole point of this whole thing is to gain compliance. You don't want to put it too far out because that letter's gonna end up in the round file and blow around your yard because it never made it to the dumpster, right?
But, but Bill, to your point, if we have frost issues and frost in the ground, 30 days really isn't gonna be enough. So if we're gonna put a memo out, wouldn't we want to have a reasonable timeframe where weather is gonna allow...
I give them 15 days to respond. By the time they get it back into our office and we do a review, we're another 45 days and if I'm not mistaken, spring comes March 21st, something next month, we're getting there, we're getting close.
So within 16 days, that's how you say it's a good time.
You're just talking 15 days for response, not for compliance.
Right.
Because obviously, these chains, they have to get bids and they have to just say things.
Oh, yeah, yeah, exactly.
When you said 15 days, I thought, well, that's...
And I'm sure a lot of them aren't gonna go real easy. I'm guessing the one that we were just discussing, its location's gonna be difficult because you got an ice cream place right next door and where's this thing gonna go that it meets everybody's needs? That site's gonna be, that site's gonna be tough to deal with.
I'll think of a pad is required, you know, for those.
There isn't. However, I'd never recommend asphalt because most businesses have what they call front loaders. So those trucks come in, put it up, tip it over, bang it a few times, make sure it's clean and drop it back down. Well, if it's not concrete but asphalt, all of a sudden, you start pumping on that asphalt and the next thing you know, you got two great big ruts out there. And then the gates don't work and then people don't, the dumpster companies don't shut the gates. Half the time, they won't empty them if the gates aren't open when they get there. It's, it's a total policing issue, but it's a pain in the neck, but it can be done.
So just for clarification, the memo that goes out will have a response date within 14 to 15 days?
Yes, 15.
So it'll spell out to respond back?
I even usually put an end date, not just 15 days.
An end date.
I would put an end date and give them an additional five for the mail.
All right.
Something like that.
Okay, thank you, Bill.
All right.
You know, I've been with Mark and Mark wanted to get this thing resolved, so we'll get her out.
Wayne?
I'm sorry?
I'd like to make a clarification, am I including group homes and apartment buildings on that?
Yes.
Everything, yes.
Everything.
Wayne, thank you for bringing that up.
Yes.
What says businesses and homes, what, homes are commercial?
Home homes.
Those would be businesses, not homes.
There's some condos that would qualify.
Condos, apartment buildings.
Commercial, right? I was just curious, like, homes, are you talking like not home-based businesses or anything like that?
Anybody that has a dumpster, that utilizes a dumpster with a pickup?
It would be all businesses, really.
That's a business, pretty much.
Businesses, okay. That's what's confusing me with homes.
Next item on the administrative update is the DTE light conversion process. Contract and purchase order has been returned to DTE for our streetlight conversion to LEDs and the clerk is waiting to hear from DTE on the scheduling process, correct?
Correct.
Okay, but that will be happening shortly. Now, we have a shred service that, I believe it was Councilman, did you bring that up?
Yes.
Councilman Skarnica brought it up. We do have some quotes, Liz, what do you have for us? Do you have a spreadsheet?
Yes, I provided it to everybody. Standard is really, if we want to do like a purge, we would want to make a decision on one of these companies to use or that's who I requested quotes from. I know the township basically does purges, so I don't know if we want to have a console at the office that gets picked up on a monthly or bi-monthly basis or if we want to do periodic purges.
Well, then that would, if you did, you know, if we did that, then it would be, of course, a timing issue. It's like, you know, when you could expect to have the purge completed and all of that, so.
Are these the normal, everyday documents or is it also the documents that we've been scanning and all that as well?
Correct. Anything that would have any, any type of information on it that you don't want to just throw in the garbage.
And speaking of which, how are we doing with the scanned documents? I know that you were working on that for a while there.
I was gonna ask about the intern, too, but, because we, I think in our December meeting, we said about bringing the intern back and I don't know if you've brought him back, but, I mean, it's...
Is that still open to do that? I know we're getting off subject, but...
It sounds like it's still open.
Yes.
We can, you know, if council agrees, we can take this offline and kind of see like what we've bested our needs and talk to township, if council agrees to do that. I can follow up with Liz.
Okay. Thank you, Liz, thank you, Colleen. Water cooler, we have an update there to purchase existing water coolers from the village's current water supplier. Anything earth shattering in there, Liz, that...
Nothing earth shattering, just wanted to follow up on a request.
Okay, and again, so then there's no action required. The next item is, of course, the road salt issue, rock, road, rock salt issue, which we've discussed already. So I think that's it for that item. New business, item 12, we have a new DPW employee.
I don't think he's here.
Peter Valentine, Pete?
I don't think he's here.
Okay. I would encourage council to, if you see a person you don't know, it's not like we have a lot of DPW workers. If you see somebody other than Bob Hoxwell or, or Mike...
Pete. Mike Pete.
Well, then you're gonna, you're gonna know it's Pete. But go up to him, introduce yourselves and welcoming as our newest DPW employee.
So do we have two Peets now?
No, we call him Mike P., his last name is...
Oh, Mike. How you pronounce his last name? Poplowski?
Porczynski.
Porczynski?
I don't know.
Yeah, Mike, I call him Mike Pete.
We're pretty now, right? Uh, Mike and Pete.
Correct.
So this guy's name is?
Pete.
Pete.
Peter Valentine.
Pete.
Pete and Pete.
I was waiting for that.
His last name is Pete.
Right, yeah.
So he's Pete.
I talked to him.
Oh.
Item 12B under new business, we have a Brandon Fire Dispatch Service Agreement. Chief Pappas is here tonight.
I would take your CPR class, yeah.
Oh, God, I hope it doesn't require that.
Is this, so this is a three-year contract, is that right, chief?
That is correct.
And this is with Oakland County?
Oakland County Sheriff's Office.
And, and the primary contract entities are Oakland County and the Charter Township of Brandon.
That is correct.
Which includes the Village of Ortonville.
That is correct.
That is correct, okay.
They cover dispatch services for the fire department. The fire department covers both the Village of Ortonville and Brandon Township.
Correct.
So what you have is the contract in front of you. It's a renewal. We have been with the sheriff's department doing our dispatching since 2008. We've, have we had problems in the past? Absolutely. Have they been quick to remedy them? Absolutely. So anybody will make mistakes and we usually get those rectified and make sure that we have a good communication with them. We do meet with the representative from the dispatch services for fire dispatch, monthly, sometimes twice a month, depending on the meetings that they're available for so that we can discuss any concerns that we may have with them. It did go up, no surprise there. The biggest part is the call volume and as the newspaper let out early is that we, we have a large, we've had a large increase in call volume and it's most notably, probably a good thing to bring up is that when I joined this department in 1987, we ran 314 calls for the year. Last year, we ran 1,323. So to say that we have increased, yeah, significantly. But anyways, they do all of our dispatch for us. When we estimated our budget, it was an estimation of, geez, we think it might be this dollar amount and I was off by $900. So I was really close, but no cigar. So what I'm asking for is the fire authority, although we didn't have a meeting, I sent them the information, said this is what we're doing, this is the only item that I have right now and to save time and effort on everybody's part was, hey, do you have any issues with this? So I did get verbal authority back from, verbal and written authority from all of them, approval to bring this forward to both the village and to the township. And what we're asking for is that, to renew that contract and then also to make a budget amendment at the same time to increase our dispatch fees from $35,600 to $36,500 and to take that additional $900 from our carry forward.
Thank you. Just for council's edification purposes, the last line, I think, needs to be modified slightly. Not that it's going to change the overall intent, but for record purposes, moving forward as we leave our legacy in place, that last line, I believe, should be amended to, as part of the suggested motion for council to consider, to take the, and then add the word needed, additional $900 from, and then add, and strike the word "are" and add "from" the Brandon Fire Department's carry forward fund balance. Because the word "are" is kind of...
Not ours.
It's not ours. It's not coming out of our budget.
Is that close to speaking?
You tried, good try, chief.
You should know we're gonna catch it.
So has this been presented to Brandon Township already?
No, you will, Brandon Township's gonna be the last one. So sometimes the way the meetings fall is it comes here first, sometimes it goes there first. I know there was consternation about that before in the past, that why do you, you know, why don't the village get a chance to look at it first? Well, here's your opportunity, you get to say, you get to have first say on this one, so.
So is everyone clear on that? We're, we're adding the word needed between, the last line, between the and additional and then we're striking the word "are" and in place the Brandon Fire Department's carry forward fund balance.
Thank you.
Okay.
No, it was a good catch.
Thank you, chief.
That does help clarify and actually, I will be doing that when I give it to the township, too, so thanks.
Okay.
Saved me some extra work.
Yep. So I, I make a motion to accept the 2018-2021 Fire Dispatch Service Agreement between the County of Oakland and the Charter Township of Brandon as written in amend line item Dispatch fees from $36,600 to $36,000...
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five thousand six hundred dollars even, to $36,500 even, and to take the additional, the needed additional $900 from the Brandon Fire Department's carry forward fund balance.
Support.
Motion by Councilman Wills, supported by Councilman Eschman. To approve the motion as amended and is there further discussion?
No.
And since we're not spending our own money, we do not need a roll call vote. So all those in favor of the motion as read, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you, chief.
Yep.
Appreciate all your efforts.
You're welcome. If there's any questions regarding the third quarter or the fourth quarter or the year end report, by all means, make contact with me, I'd be happy to explain it, but I think the pamphlet gives all the information.
Thank you, sir.
I do have a question on the, the painting of the garage. Are they all completed with the painting, like the trim? Because it looked like when I was going by, it looked like some trim work still was not completed.
Well, there's some trim work that just recently came up missing.
Oh.
So there was some damage to the building, so.
Wind damage, or?
Eh, not major, just a piece of trim was broken off and a truck was backing in.
Oh, this, it just looked like some of the interior part of it just wasn't painted yet, so I was just...
No, they're...
Didn't help because the doors are white?
No, Wayne, don't even get me started.
No, this was, this was the windows, this wasn't the doors.
One, one thing I will tell you that I have learned in this job is 30 years, I've seen just about everything, so.
It was just the window trim, chief.
Okay, item 12C, the DDA board candidates, we have in your packets resumes on two candidates. So as required by statute, I am putting forth the, these two individuals as recommended candidates to be included in as board members of the Village of Ortonville Downtown Development Authority. They have shown a considerable amount of interest and involvement thus far without having been board members, but we need to fill our board, our board vacancies. So with that said, are there any questions for the candidates? They're both here tonight.
What are the requirements for this? So I'm new to this, so I'm just trying to be brought up to speed.
Well, we have to have at least one member of the board, a resident of the village, only one. The rest can be outside of the village, technically. Our, our DDA president, Allison Brower, stand up, please, if you would. Allison lives in Brandon Township. Our newest applicant, Matt Bailey, is the pastor, pastor at Brandon Community, used to be Nazarene Church.
He's still Nazarene.
Still Nazarene Church. Yeah, across from Lake Louise. And of course, Courtney is a former council member here. So if you have any questions for them, ask away.
So that's the only requirement that's...
Yeah, they have to, you know, obviously, you want to see the businesses thrive and the downtown development develop and thrive and so these people have a passion for that and this is where their passion lies, so.
And then what all would your jobs entail?
Supporting, well, it depends upon which committee they get on. Matt is on organization with me, so the Downtown Development Authority, I'd be happy to share some information through some printed literature. In fact, I could forward something for all of you that could be very helpful. There are four subgroups, we have organization, economic, and you all have all of the subjects in the packet. So you can see some of the members on here with the committees. Matt's on organization, I think she'll, I think Courtney based on her interest in government, she's probably a volunteer in the most important level. There's the promotions, which is promoting downtown, economic restructuring, which is helping to rebuild your tax base, essential, next of the community. And then design, which is to building your historical components as well as helping to do reinforcements like our beside. So we try to provide a lot of support to your small businesses, be like sort of a one-stop shop for them. Help get them onboarded, help them to be successful, do ribbon cuttings, promote them.
Is it required to be a business owner or anything like that?
To be in the DDA?
Yes.
Nope, you just gotta be someone who wants to give your blood, sweat and tears... Nope, you just gotta be someone who wants to give your blood, sweat, and tears to trying to make it a better place.
So there's 14 here, so what, who are, what two are leaving the board, then?
Leaving the board?
Yeah, because it says no more than 12.
The board, they just have different...
You have, is there, is that, am I wrong in thinking there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven?
They're not board members, they're not board members.
These are, I mean, well, volunteers, but this list are current committees, they're not board members, they're not directors.
So who, who of this list, then, is board member? You got Matt, Matt proposed, Matt, proposed.
So if you go to the front page, it has the subsection for board appointment, has the large paragraph below that, you see the 2018 DDA Board of Directors.
Yep.
And then on the second page, it has the safety surveillance managers, and that's on the low down of the...
So essentially, none of the people on the, on the second page are committee members, or are actually board members. Thank you.
I would like to make the motion to approve the appointment of Courtney McLaren and Matt Bailey to the Ortonville Downtown Development Authority Board of Directors, class of 2022, effective February 26, 2018.
I'll support that motion. Motion by Councilman Bryce, supported by Councilman Wills, to approve this request, the appointments of these individuals as read. Any further discussion?
I'd like to have just a little further discussion in terms of one candidate. Courtney, I know you've been very boisterous through, through the whole chicken ordinance discussion.
Sure, sure. And, and I appreciate that, because I think everybody should have a voice as to their thoughts and concerns over the chicken ordinance, but for me, of all the people that stuck out, there's one person that was pretty, I think, darn right mean, and that was you. For me, that's my perception, and you were very demanding and very, what I thought, I don't want to say threatening, but very intimidating, right? So as Wayne talked tonight, obviously, we want to all be professionals, and we want to be open about it, but we should do it in a professional way that it doesn't intimidate council, doesn't intimidate any board members, et cetera. So that would be my only concern.
Sure. And as I'm sure you've also noticed, I have not, and forgive me, I'm overcoming bronchitis, but I have not been participating since, I don't know, when the last time I spoke, was September or October, maybe even November. It's been a few months anyways. I've just been kind of sitting back and, and helping from the wings rather than up front. So while I can't speak to the past, I can only speak to the future and, and tell you that I'm, I hope to be more effective working with a group of people rather than standing up and voicing on my own, and being part of a group, again, rather than the loud voice up front.
Okay, and so, and I appreciate the comments. And so for me, I know there's been many talk about how council's been divided and, and whatnot, and I, I think really division is where, between council and the planning commission, council and the DDA, I really think there's a gap there, and I think the bridge needs to, to really be between council and the DDA, council and the planning commission. On several fronts, this board, several board members have asked for workshops with the planning commission to talk about chickens. We've been denied that workshop, all right? And on several fronts, we talked about workshops with the DDA on talking and addressing certain subjects that we have alignment. Alignment between council, alignment between council and the DDA, and alignment in the Brandon Township. To me, that's been denied, and I think that's where part of the problem is, not, I'm not talking about DDA denied, not talking about planning commission denied. I think the folks here know workshops have been suggested to try to create that alignment so that there isn't this gap, perceived gap, between Brandon Council and, and these commissions. And that's why I brought it up, I just want to make sure that when we move forward with this decision here, that we're not creating a further gap, but, but trying to bridge the gaps that, that are there.
I'll state it. Yes, please.
I just wanted to say that, and it's on the agenda, we have discussed in the DDA, we had the quarterly meeting, hopefully you'll have an opportunity, but we had a quarterly meeting with the DDA, or a joint meeting, I should say, with the DDA and planning council and the council. And I thought it was very productive, because we want very much to align and support. I know the planning commission wants that as well. So it's on your agenda, we've been requesting that as well. We would like to see that happen quarterly so that we can understand what your goals are and we can help support those things. So on the same page with you, 100 percent.
And I'm not sure why Courtney was singled out, because Courtney has been part of planning commission, part of us, and now part of the DDA, and I think that's a great blend to bring that experience to that, so I appreciate you signing up to, to be a part of that.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Courtney while she's up?
I just have one comment, because I have to say this, it's, and I found at the, at the chicken, the first chicken thing, knowing your background, I read your bio, your education, and I found that there was some disrespect to our board here, the council, and, and it came from you, and it kind of, I don't want to jump on what Dan said, this is, this is coming from me, so I have to get it off my chest. I thought that was, I have a, I don't know, I'm looking, I know that you said it's in the past, and that's, that's fine, that works, but that always concerned me, because when I would go to the meetings before and you were on the council even, there were times when you were almost wanting to go toe-to-toe with, you know, different residents in the village, and I didn't see that, I didn't kind of like that as a person, but that was just me, you know?
Sure. I can't, without knowing exactly what you're referring to, I can't speak to any of that. I, I do, I will say that in the September and, and back when all this kind of started, as much as maybe you felt disrespected, I mean, I kind of did too, and I know several residents did as well, and that's kind of, I mean, it was, you know, it was, it was, it felt like an us versus them, and I don't want to make excuses, and I don't want to backtrack and get into a big, long debate about things that, that I'm not really here to talk about tonight. But, you know, again, that's, that's in the past. As you all know, I have not spoken at, at the last several meetings I've been to, I've not gotten up, I've not taken part in, in any of the, as we all know, what happened that last Wednesday.
Last Wednesday evening.
Last Wednesday, I had, you know, there was clapping, everybody was clapping, there was nothing clapping, you agree with somebody, but, you know, I, I wasn't up here partaking in, in some of the things that were said, and, and it's, because I said my piece, I, I feel like I was heard, and I feel like it's, my part is done. So I, again, I'm not here to speak on chickens, I'm not here to argue about that anymore, so I'm here to move forward and, and work towards, you know, bringing, as Allison stated already, and I, as you all did too, you know, bridging the gap and working together.
I think that, you know, our goal is to treat everyone with respect and dignity, which I certainly try to do. I know I've had a lot of people quite angry with me lately, sending me emails, and I respond in a, in a very positive way to other people's negativity, you know, and very politely and very respectfully, and...
Which I have heard, and I have heard many people's thanking you for responding, whomever has responded.
Yeah, so that's my goal, is that we all treat each other with respect and dignity. And I know sometimes, you know, you're going to get mad at me and you're going to come like, you know, and, or send me an email complaining about my behavior, or what I said or did, or whatever, but you will always get respect and dignity back from me, I guarantee you. So that's, that's all I have to say, is that's what our goal is, is to treat everyone with respect and dignity.
I agree.
Thank you, Karen. Thank you, Courtney. So we have a motion, and we have support. Any further discussion?
Are we doing a motion, or do we do the paper, what we've done in the past?
No, you have to approve the motion. You have a motion on the floor.
I know, and I guess because we've done in the past, we've written ballots down, right?
She wants a silent vote.
Didn't we do that before?
Yes, we have.
Isn't that what we've done in the past?
Well, we've done that with respect to council, filling council positions.
We've done it on the, I guess I'm just trying to follow suit, what we've done in the past, is all I'm trying to, just...
I'm comfortable with it either way, but...
Just trying to follow suit whichever.
I think we need to follow it with whatever we did in the past.
Whatever council decides, I mean.
Okay, if you want to do ballots, we'll do ballots. Got what council wants to do?
I mean, is that normal, it sounds like, but...
Doesn't happen, doesn't happen thankfully all that frequently, and so...
It doesn't, but...
So whatever, it just takes more time.
Is this going to be a yes, no for both?
I'm sorry?
Is this going to be a yes, no for both?
Yeah, it is, it's, the motion is for both.
This one, there's four. Oops.
I'll take a little more.
It's gonna look too funky.
Well, it would, they would be noticing this being my ballot. If it had...
Here, I'll share a piece with me. This is yours?
That's mine.
Oh, yes, sorry.
Double fold it, double fold it.
That's double.
So yes or no, both?
Double.
Just list the final tabulation, or the final result, not the, not the details.
There wasn't any details, was it, yes or no?
She doesn't have to list five of this or two of that.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I can see this is going to be a longer meeting.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passed. Look forward to your involvement. Thank you very much for your assistance and your patience tonight. Item 12D, the DNR Passport, Recreation Passport Grant Resolution and Application. The village will be applying on its own this year for the DNR Recreation Passport Grant to renovate the concession building located at Sherman Park. The details, needing electrical service update, lighting, storage, plumbing, flooring, signage, roofing, painting, drainage, just about everything. Handicap accessible parking and accessible, that's a double.
Oh, it should have been bathroom and parking.
And what?
Should have been bathroom and parking.
Accessible bathroom, okay.
Handicap accessible bathroom.
And parking. Interim manager John Lyons is adding an additional $7,000 to the grant application. Final project cost for the addition of an approximately 12-by-20-foot porch roof that will be open for protection from the weather. So the final project cost is $37,000, the grant amount seeking is $27,750, and our village contribution will be 25% of that, which is $9,250. So we're asking for council's permission to proceed with the grant application only at this point?
I make a motion to approve the resolution indicating the village plans to apply for the DNR Recreation Passport Grant in the amount of $27,750. The village will match 25% or $9,250 of the total project cost of $37,000.
Should we put in not to exceed, or don't we need to put that? Not to exceed?
What?
The 9250?
Or just not to exceed 37,000?
No, no, no. Our share is 25%.
Right.
I mean, I don't know if those are hard numbers, or if it's something we want to do and not...
Well, it's a 25% grant, so whatever the grant is...
So it's going to be, it could be flexible.
Our share's going to be 25%.
So it could be flexible.
So as long as we don't get over 37,000, your comment not to exceed 9250 would be appropriate.
And then if it changes, I got to come back to us, yeah? So I just...
I'll support that.
So is, are there plans already written, or this is just right now a concept?
This is, this is applying, this is an application. This is one of John Lyons' goals that has been given to him to get this done before he leaves us.
Very good.
Okay, so you're going to reword that, do you have the wording that...
Am I going to put not to exceed?
Yes.
Okay.
Will match 25% or not to exceed 9250. Okay, so you supported that? I did. So we have a motion by Councilman Eschman, supported by Councilman Batsu, as read and as amended. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Skornica?
Yes.
Sliva?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Bryce?
Yes.
Batsu?
Yes.
Eschman?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Old Business, item 13. Some of these are handouts, we have decided a date, we referenced earlier about a joint meeting with the Planning Commission and the DDA, and perhaps even Brandon Township. To, so, looking, looking in your schedules, we talked about this last month in my absence, I, I was hoping to have some dates, but nobody brought any dates forward, so we're not gonna, we're going to sit here all night until we get some dates ironed out.
I'm retired, anytime.
Anytime.
So I'm out of this conversation.
I could be retired, so anytime is good for me, too.
I want to be retired.
So let's pick a couple. Our March council meeting is the 26th. Of course, Easter is April 1st. I'm not sure when, is there a spring break or anything? Is anybody... I'm not sure when, is there a spring break or anything? Does anybody know?
First week of April.
First week of April.
March 31st, or whatever, is Good Friday, and then.
So the week, the week after Easter, the schools are out.
Mm-hmm, 6 through the 10th or so.
I know that involves you, Tanya. Are you gonna be gone? Are you gonna be at that?
I'm actually unavailable through the school year.
You're unavailable?
I'm not even in Ortonville till you 30 at night, any night.
Okay, until the end of the school year.
So go ahead.
That's a weekday? How about a Saturday?
Uh, Friday, Saturday, Sunday's fine.
A Saturday would be?
Just, I mean, don't worry about me.
Okay. Well, I'm looking for anybody and everybody. Colleen?
I'm, I'm open as of right now, throw a date out. I mean, I have a vacation coming up, but go ahead and throw it out, and I'll try to work around it.
What month are we targeting?
March.
March, March.
I mean, I'm open during the week, so.
I take it this is gonna be during the evening, or what?
Could be late afternoon, could be evening.
If you're talking about the week of March 26th, I'm fairly open.
That's Good Friday week.
Right.
I don't know if anybody.
I mean, you know, we could do 28th, 29th, or something beforehand, but.
So we're gonna flow out a couple of dates, the 28th, 29th, and talk to the other boards?
20th, the 29th works for me.
Yep.
28th is a Wednesday.
Wednesday or Thursday?
Wednesday or Thursday?
March 28th or 29th.
We do have with us Rick McAvinci from the Planning Commission. Rick, do you know of any conflicts off the top of your head?
No, just, well, firstly, I wanna put down Saturday.
But as far as, as far as March 28th or 29th, none that you're aware of?
We have our planning commission meeting on the 6th, but no other hard date.
If we're gonna have the meeting earlier than the 7, Thursday's better than Wednesday for me.
Earlier than Wednesday?
If we're gonna have it earlier than 7, so 7 o'clock is, is fine either evening, but if it's gonna be earlier, because it was talked that we may have it earlier.
Well, then I'd rather go earlier and make it Thursday. Tanya's not gonna be able to be available anyway, so I'd rather go 6 then, on Thursday than 7 on Wednesday.
Okay, we're gonna shoot for 6 PM.
On the 29th.
On 3:29, and then, if, the alternate being the day before, and then that would be 7? Perhaps?
7 on the 29th.
Okay, Rick, do you have that?
29th to 6.
Okay.
That update would be the 28th, that's something.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, council. Old Business, under item 13B, interior lighting quotes, this is an interesting. Now, we're talking about the interior of our buildings, and our DPW supervisor has given tours to five or six different contractors over the last several weeks. And we have two traditional bids that have been received, and one very, very non-traditional bid. By that, I mean that we have, just as an update, so you'll, you'll notice that there's not a, a motion to accept them. Two of them are bid specifications that the people responded, or the contractors responded in a traditional way. This is your price, this is your down payment. Now, the third, the third gentleman, or third company, gave us a, a price of no cost. Only, they would bill us based upon the amount of energy savings that we received.
For how long?
Month by month, until no unending time. Without a maximum on the amount of the bid.
So we'd be restricted.
So I'm, I'm just sitting there thinking, hmm.
So we'd be restricted every month to turn in.
The cost savings.
Our cost savings.
Just so we have a different lighting.
So we don't really have a, a final bottom line figure? And I'm thinking, hmm. I know energy management, I know that the school district has done that type of a thing with management companies, but it's, it's more closed-ended, you know, it's not going on forever and without a.
And with technology changing all the time, who knows what we're gonna see in another three to five years, so. Didn't one of the, the companies that did the bid say that it would pay for itself in two years, and all that, or?
I don't know, was that?
Just a little over two years.
Was that the one, or?
Boss? But yes, two, two of the quotes I did, both would pay for the lighting in under two years. However, that is for the village office and the DPW garage, because those use, those lights are used on a more regular basis than the Old Mill and Old Town Hall. Those two would take longer to pay for itself, and there's really no way to predict how much longer. But it would be more than the, the two years. You're probably looking anywhere from six to 10 years to pay those two buildings for the lighting upgrade, in your save, in your energy savings.
As a fire safety standpoint, with the new lighting, wouldn't it also be safer that way, too? Using LEDs that don't burn as hot and everything else?
You still have the electrical connections, but yes, to your point, the anti-dustant bulbs are not gonna be as hot. Using the LED is not as hot typically. You still have the fluorescent lights. While the tubes aren't hot, you know, there's others, there's other things there. So, I, I, I'm not gonna say that, you know, it's gonna be less of a fire hazard, because everything that deals with electricity, anything can happen. If it's not wired incorrectly, that could create problems.
You know, for a facility's standpoint, that's what I do for living, labor, the cost of labor of keep replacing bulbs and ballots is, you gotta figure that in, too.
So, what are our two bids that we do have that are traditional in scope?
Traditional bids, the one that I had presented to you in January came in around $47 or $4800.
Okay.
And then the other one came in at less than $3,000. So I don't have the, the final number, I can add it up real quick for you.
So we're, we don't have the help of any professional consultants in this, we're vetting this ourselves?
But for the same, for the same number of lamps, the same wattage, the same everything, one was less than 3,000?
I have not had a chance to compare apples to apples.
Yeah, we need to do that first, then, yeah.
So we're not really asking for a motion tonight, but I just wanted you to be aware that.
It'll just be an old business next time.
There's some creative things out there that people are attempting to do. Okay? To be continued, as they say. Items 13C, under Old Business, non-domesticated animal ordinance update. So there is a letter dated the 26th, which is today. We all have a copy of that?
Who highlighted this part?
I highlighted it at the request of DNR manager Lyons.
Questions, comments?
I haven't had a chance to look it over since we just got it, yeah.
Yeah, I understand. Okay.
So, I just wanna understand, so council already motioned and approved two specific ordinances under the same, okay, area in our ordinance of 90, if you will, 90.6.
Correct.
So where does the attorney stand with the vetting or rewording of those specific ordinances that council motioned and approved to move forward with?
Well, this is a direct response, saying that he doesn't feel that the one issue is enforceable.
Well, then, wouldn't we?
That's what we were looking for last week, and he, you know, he didn't provide at the time, and this is follow-up detail to that meeting. This is what you're looking for.
So this particular, is this his response here, then? I, I guess I, I need to know if this matches what we submitted them, Tim?
Yeah, I mean, I think we'll have to pen this, because we haven't had, I mean, I know I haven't, I haven't, what?
No, we're not gonna act on this.
This is what we asked, this is what his response was.
Yeah.
What are we supposed to do then? Study this?
Yes.
I mean, I, yeah, I don't know that any differences, I don't know.
But I, I guess my point is, I would expect him to highlight, not, not, this is obviously highlighted by John Lyons, but I would've expected our attorney to review what we did provide him, and have him highlight the sections where he has concerns and make recommendations to move forward with. That's what I expected, moving forward from the legal.
And that's what I expressed to him after the meeting last week, too, that, that's what I, that's what I was looking for, and then the miscommunication and stuff, so I, I don't know. I didn't see the final ordinance to see if this is it or not, but.
Well, the final ordinance, technically according to our attorney, has to come from us.
Right, the one that we submitted for his review, that's what I'm saying. I don't, I don't know.
But he's given us feedback that that one issue is not enforceable.
Did he? That one's not. Or he, he goes, I do not believe that such a provision would be. I guess what I'm, from an attorney's perspective, it's like, I guess I don't like the, the warm water. It's either we can, or we can't, and if not, let's get it to we can, or we can't, not like, I don't think we can. I mean, he's the attorney, it's like, let's make it this way or this way, not like, I don't think, you know what I'm saying?
Well, the first statement says, it addresses chickens only compared to animals, so why would he move on and spend all the time and the money if we haven't quite come to which one we're doing? Well, no, because we did non-domesticated animals, and then chickens, we changed up.
No, we did both.
No, we did at large, we did at large, and we did non-domesticated.
We did both.
And, right, and the first bullet addresses that, that it's inconsistent and it's both. It needs to be, you know.
Well, he's, he's suggesting it could be done all in one.
He's separating the two.
Right.
Into two separate ordinances, rather than one.
Write that up correctly, then submit it to him, then.
Okay.
My, my, the expectation was that, okay, he's gonna come back and mark up what we provided him.
Right, and he didn't.
Give us the concerns he has, his recommendations that he has, with what we gave him, and then come back for our review.
Okay.
That was the expectation.
He, he did call me about a half hour bef, that's why I was late in arriving, he called me to make sure I got this. Okay, and I told him I did, and we would, we would take it under advisement, so.
Okay, so direction, further direction from legal now, what is that direction?
Well, I will go back to him now, and, and state that you wanna see the ordinance that was presented to him actually marked up or composed.
The ordinance that Liz.
To be in align with what he's suggesting here. That's what you're wanting, you're wanting him to do it.
He said he could do, he said it in front of it.
He says, if you, and even though we provided a draft of what we wanted, then his, his experience on marking it up, or whatever, you know, he believed to, we should have. He also said, if you want me to write an ordinance, I'll write an ordinance, so is, you know, I, I mean, I don't know if this is his ordinance, or if this is what Liz sent to him as an attachment of what came out of our council meeting.
What, what is it, Liz?
No, this, this is not what I sent him, I sent him the complete.
Okay, see, that's what, yeah.
So where did that come from, then? From, from legal?
So he, this, so he must do.
So, it, I read it to, to mean that he took the ordinance that I had submitted to him, and then underneath it, there were several other things that would have to be included.
Other local titles, yes.
Yes, and he indicated that he was just gonna draft one ordinance that addressed everything, is how I read his response.
So if he reviewed it, he marked it up, highlighted areas of concern, and they should come back to council for that, for review.
Okay. Okay, I will get with him tomorrow.
Okay.
Item 13D, Ortonville Wildlife Preservation Park Boundary Survey Quotes. So at the direction of council, Clark Liz sent out for requests, requesting from Davison Land Surveying, Thomas Smith in Clarkston, Roe Professional Services in Flint. To date, only Roe has submitted a quote, and that was for $5,200.
Well, I think we need to get these other two quotes in, or two quotes from two other places, if they're not going to submit quotes.
Is that a state survey?
Yes.
Yes.
Maybe I missed that when you read it, I don't know.
Did they say, say they weren't interested, was there a response as to why they didn't? One gentleman, Mr. Smith, I had to resend my request to him.
Yeah, be sneak.
And Davison Land Surveying, I called them this afternoon to find out where they were, and he's gonna have to call me back tomorrow morning, because I didn't talk to the same person.
So we need to wait on this, then?
Yeah, yeah, and, and there's no action requested tonight.
Okay.
But with respect to trustee Eschman's earlier commentary about signage, that's just a survey, this is just a survey issue, having a couple signs to Mrs. Brooks' commentary to let the public know that, number one, it is a park, this is an entrance, it can be an entrance-type sign, is that what?
Yeah, I, I think.
Off of, off of the only, well, let's see, the only road that would be, that the actual park borders on is Mill Street. To my knowledge.
What about where the Red Barn and all that is? Is there a use way through there?
No.
Well, it borders that, but it's just water.
It's swampy.
It borders, but it's that, that's private property, it's not the village's.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, so, so the whole purpose with it, as we are discussing, the illegal activity, the illegal cutting of trees, the illegal building of structures on this property, we said, well, okay, do our residents know that this is the Ortonville, now the Ortonville Wildlife Preservation Park, to be used for, okay, hiking. Those who want to hike off trail, this is not a designated trail, but certainly to go hike around back there, off trail. Similar to what you would do in a federal, if you entered federal land, you're allowed to hike through the woods. They don't have specific trails, with the exception of some, I can't say all. So we wanted to make sure that that designation was out there, so that, okay, there were quads and motorcycles being run on this property illegally. And, so we wanted to just make, have a nice park sign, something that, you know, is not gaudy or anything, something that looks like a state park, brown. I mean, and it's something that you would see as you would enter any park, in terms of maybe rules, or what's, what's allowed in the park. So, we were supposed to go back, and, and I get it, we're, we're without a village manager right now, and, and that's, this would be a village manager task to research that, the signage, and I just wanna make sure that this, and I asked Liz to put old topics on, so they're not lost or forgotten, in terms of bringing up something, and then, and then forgetting about them months on end. So that's why I've asked to put it back on.
So, you know, we do, we do have a relatively local company that does do signage, and Paramount Signs could be approached to, to have something developed that would be appropriate, I think. Item 13E, SEMCOG membership. Now, before John Lyons left for his winter down south, his recommendation was, is that we would be well-served to join SUBCOG, and I believe the cost was $750 a year?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and I don't know why it was deferred, waited on a new manager, what's the, is there, was there some delay that I'm missing as to why?
It was in the meeting minutes as to why.
Why it was delayed.
It's because, when you join this, they offer training to, you know, two people from your organization. And so we wanted the person, one of those persons would be the, the new manager.
Okay.
That's why.
Okay, well, they're, they, they are a great source of, a resource for grants, and I really didn't wanna wait for a whole lot longer, but that's a good point. Thank you, Karen. Any other questions on that issue? 13F, running at large. Again, we have. Again, we have a modification on a animal control ordinance. And again, this has nothing to do with anything other than running at large.
It's one of the two, one of the two ordinances we approved to move forward with in January, correct?
Correct.
Yes. Should we read it?
Well, somebody needs to make a motion if they'd like.
I mean, I was just wondering if we should read it to the public.
We will.
Okay. Okay, I'll make the motion here. To amend Animal Control Ordinance Section ninety point sixty, running at large to read, no person being the owner of, in possession of, or having control of any livestock, domesticated animal, household pet, or poultry shall permit such to run at large upon any alley, street, park, or other public place in the Village of Ortonville, or upon the land or property of any other person. And then also, it says this ordinance shall take effect thirty days after publication.
Support, can?
Okay, so we have a motion and we have support.
Did you have something?
Excuse me, we have a motion for the, by councilman Sliva, supported by councilman As read, do we have any questions, comments? Go ahead.
Yeah, I just, I think the ordinance is fine, I just think that very last sentence where it states, I'll just read as, comma, park or other public place in the, public place in the Village of Ortonville, or upon, or upon the land or property of any other person, so it would be any other person in the Village of Ortonville, correct? Because if you leave it as any other person, that, that seems open-ended, it didn't, what does that mean? So it would be any other person in the Village of, that we're talking about.
Ortonville, upon the land or property of any other person.
Well.
Any other, any other person.
I'm gonna go.
In the Village of Ortonville.
What did the attorney suggest on that?
This is, this is directly from what the attorney provided.
Okay.
What is, what is, what is?
That's what it's, and that's what we read on the twenty-second.
Or property of any other person mean?
Or upon the land or property of any other person.
In the Village, and I'm just saying.
Other than themselves, other than themselves.
Right, I'm just, I'm just saying in the Village of Ortonville.
Anyone else's property.
Anyone else's property, that's the way I read it.
Is it assume that it's in the Village of Ortonville without actually writing that?
Yes.
It's our ordinance, so I guess it would be.
All right. It's in the Village of Ortonville, comma, or, upon the land or property of any other person.
Okay.
Or instead of questioning all of it, you leave it with the original, beyond his or her own premises unless under control.
In the Village of Ortonville.
As long as, if you leave your yard and your property, you control your animal, without five sentences of every single place possible. If you are beyond your property, your animal will be in control of you.
That's what the attorney said to us, you know, that's what he said compared to what.
He said on the original one, all you have to do is change dog to animal and leave it as is, that was his original recommendation back in April of the year, or I'm sorry, August, was you just change dog to animal and you leave everything as is and it's done. Money saved, time saved, we're done.
I think, I think this is good then, if we don't, if the councils or legal's saying we don't need to identify that and it's already assumed because it is our ordinance, that's fine, I'm just questioning it.
So we have a motion, we have a support, any further discussion, any questions?
Are we allowed to ask a question?
No. Hearing, hearing none, and all those in favor of the motion as read, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Now, as Bill Denon left, he was sitting back there in the corner, the building official.
We'll knock on the door.
There's no brakes.
Get out. Yeah, brakes.
Okay.
We don't get to go.
Yeah.
Seatbelt. One of the things I wanted our building official to discuss was the enforcement of any ordinance, and one of the things that, one of the, one of the challenges that we have is who's gonna enforce ordinances?
Our village manager.
Is he here? Okay. Well, we. Bill?
Almost made it.
We, we just passed and approved unanimously a running and large, running at large ordinance modification, and my question, my question, I'd like you to voice your comments about enforcement, and who, in your opinion, other communities, you, we had a discussion on this a couple days back about sharing enforcement officers, we do not have an enforcement officer as such in our community, and so you made a suggestion, and then there was a second alternative, so what, what, what do other communities do that are small and don't have budgetary issue, or don't have a budgetary constraint as we do?
Many areas use their building official to also do their ordinance enforcement, i.e. Brandon Township, I do both for them.
Oh, you do?
I do.
Okay.
However, I work for them twenty-nine hours a week, but I also work in another community, the Village of Franklin, where I'm only there in their offices four hours a week, which is similar to the hours I spend here in Ortonville.
So we hire you for how many hours a week?
Four.
Four hours a week?
Yes.
And your other, during that four hours, you are, you are basically reviewing site plans for buildings?
That, building plans, having conversation with contractors, helping them get through the permit process, working with Liz on what the process or, you know, how to interact with those.
Things like dumpsters.
That's more of an ordinance enforcement issue.
Well.
I agreed when I came on with the Village of Ortonville that I would be doing primarily their building issues and not ordinance enforcement. Now, I do that for, I've done both for the Village of Franklin, however, their ordinance enforcement activities became such that I didn't, I wasn't there enough hours either, unlike, not unlike here where I'm not, only about four hours. So what they have done is they've partnered up with a couple other smaller communities in their area, and they've actually contracted and hired an ordinance enforcement officer. He's actually a retired police officer, and they've authorized him to do the ordinance enforcement activities. Now, I work with him closely, mostly over the phone, because ordinance enforcement has limited capabilities, in other words, an ordinance enforcement person does not have to be state-registered or, or licensed, you can hire anybody who could do it. However, there are certain basic principles under enforcement that you really need to do so you don't get yourself in trouble along the way. There are requirements when it comes to issuing municipal civil infractions, that you do it in a proper fashion. I've explained this to many communities that I've worked in the past and currently, that I'm not spending ten years in jail for anybody because a miss, an intended miswritten municipal civil infraction is a ten-year felony to the person that's writing it. So, anyway, the, the bottom line is, I think that you may want to check around to some of the areas nearby, and I could probably help you through that process, but actually hire somebody, or use staff that isn't currently being used within the village, to have them, or hire them to do the ordinance enforcement activities.
So the, the, I guess the comment that I have is that we need to, if we're going to be really proactive on any ordinance moving forward, we need to have somebody who is experienced, we need, and I know that in our, the hiring process for our village manager, that person would be an enforcement officer.
Correct, under your current ordinance.
And, and so your, your comment is they better know what they're doing.
Yes, or they can be taught, but there's no state law requiring them to hold a license or a registration to do it.
So when we're hiring a, a new individual as a village manager, then that teaching process, along with everything else that they have to learn, is gonna put them behind the eight ball, perhaps?
A little bit.
Well, you know, don't shrug your shoulders because it.
I think there's gonna be a learning curve for anybody that walks through the door, regardless whether it's ordinance enforcement and or the village manager position.
There, there was a recent.
I think anybody walking through the door is gonna be behind the eight ball.
Well, not necessarily, because many people that have already had that job in the past would be familiar with what those requirements would be.
Okay.
So, so if you're taking, and you're gonna hire somebody that.
With experience.
With experience as a village manager, or an administrator, or someplace in the governmental, has that governmental background, should have that knowledge. Now, clearly, if you get into the bigger governmental areas, they actually have people they hire to do that.
Oh, I understand.
When I was with my past employer, there was, I had three ordinance enforcement officers that worked for me full-time. Obviously, it's a city that needed that kind of attention, so you don't need that kind of attention, but you do have more going on here than I can afford to give you any more hours to do, and I don't think you need to hire a full-time person, I mean, there just isn't enough to do to keep that busy either. It's gonna take a while to sift through and clean up what I see around Ortonville, there, there are some areas that could use some distinct, or for sure, attention, and it's a process, it doesn't happen overnight.
So, and again, I'm, I'm hearing council wanting to, to speed up the process.
Mm-hmm.
To speed, speed up the enforcement process and do it correctly.
Yes.
So, you know, we've got a couple choices as to how that's gonna happen. So I just want council to be aware that we don't want to just slam bam, jam it down somebody's throat.
You need to do it the right way.
Besides, Bill, your wealth of knowledge, is there like a training course that's available for somebody to be able to do this, to do it properly?
Yes, there are zoning, or there are ordinance.
Seminars, trainings.
Not just that, there's actually organizations that you can join, there's the Municipal Ordinance Officers Association, there, there's a number of them that you can actually join, and they have monthly meetings, and they go through the training and that, the MTA holds conferences having to do with that, the planning, the planners association has courses, and for the most part, it's not rocket science, but at the same time, because you are dealing with the fact that there may be fines or other penalties imposed on people, you have to follow the right steps to get that done, so.
And I think in the past, we've used the village manager through maybe input from you, and we've issued memos out to certain.
A couple of your past village managers, one was very proactive, one, him and I spent a fair amount of hours going through that process, he, he had some background that kind of prepped him for that, but not through the actual experience of going through the municipal civil infraction process.
You're referring to Mike Lee?
Yes.
Yeah, as a military individual.
Yeah, I, him and I had quite a few conversations on what would be the appropriate way to move forward in this particular case, because as I mentioned earlier, you don't want to have selective enforcement, you want to be able, I mean, when I go for enforcement, I go for what's called the win. When I say the win, I get in a position where if I have to go through the court's process, when I walk out of the court, I'm the winner, okay? That's just what it's all about. That probably, some people would take that in a negative way, but the bottom line is really all I'm looking for is compliance. If everybody complied with the rules, I'd be one happy keeper, probably wouldn't have a lot to do, but everybody else would be happy. So, I'm sorry, so there are different ways to get this done, if you had staff, you wanted me to help train to avoid some of those pitfalls, I'd be more than happy to do that. I personally don't want to take it on, it's because there's a lot of footwork, there's a lot of outside activities to get you ready for that, or hire somebody that has the experience already.
Okay, okay, thank you. Appreciate your, appreciate your input, Bill.
Okay.
Okay, that concludes the items on our agenda. Other than public comment on non-agenda items, are there any public comment on non-agenda Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I just, after our meeting on Wednesday, it was.
Okay, yes.
Brought up about the Ortonville Wildlife Preservation Park, about if we were going to pursue and seek restitution for the violators of that, and I, you know, I know that when Lieutenant Glover was here, it's like just knowing like who, you know, who the one or two or three guilty parties are, you know, it could be difficult, but, you know, other than maybe the obvious trails going to their property, but it was asked of me if we were gonna seek restitution, so I'm just throwing that out there for consideration for council to pursue that.
Well, as I recall Lieutenant Glover's commentary last week, he basically said that there has to be a complaint filed. Or they're, you know, for them to.
For them to investigate.
For them to investigate, yes. And so, what's council's pleasure in that respect?
Well, he said it has to be pretty good evidence, which means he's, he suggested putting up cameras and getting the survey so we know where our property is and what it looks like.
This is after the fact.
That's what he said, he said in order to have a case, you have to have those items.
But this has already occurred, the camera will be, I think, helpful for future issues, but it won't help us in the past, past situation.
Just throwing it out there because it was brought up about, you know, restitution.
As much as I'm all for holding people accountable for what they did, in this case, the structures have been removed, they've been half-removed from the property.
Partially, yeah.
Partially, I think that if there are known ATV motorcycle trails leading out of three properties which you have identified, Wayne, then in the January meeting, we did say, okay, maybe we knock on those people's doors and say, okay, we see there's evidence, clear evidence of you driving a four, a motorized four-wheel vehicle on village property, so at least contacting those at least three known individual property owners, and then that's why the, the survey was put out and then we talked about the signs. So I love to hold people accountable, I'm also a forgiving person, too, and I, I don't know that we need to dig up, you know, what, what happened in the past, but we move forward, and how, how do we correct it moving forward so that it doesn't happen again?
In, in my meeting last week, as I referenced earlier with Dr. Outlaw, I did, I did ask him if there might be a high school group that might be willing to help, I also will be approaching the Boy Scouts, do you, you can, Rick, you could give me a, a, a name of a scoutmaster or two, perhaps? Okay, so this would be perhaps something that, if we, if we could go in there and cut the, because it's, it's very difficult from where this all is to get any kind of a piece of equipment in there, a, a big-sized truck to haul it all out, you can't certainly get a logging truck in there, you can't get any of our pickups in there, it's, there's, it's not roadworthy as such, we'd have to cut it up, I know Dan and I have talked about it, cutting it and having perhaps our DPW cut the, the logs into smaller, manageable pieces where kids might be able to carry them out with a wheelbarrow or something of that nature.
So for the record, I did go back and cut the, all the logs within the yellow bandit area into three-foot sections.
Oh, you did.
And I have removed half of those logs now, and they are on the edge of my property, stacked up, so if the, if the DPW would like to remove those logs, they were slotted out on a sled while we still had snow on the ground, all right? So there's still needs, there's still quite a bit of debris left, but I would say half the pile is gone now.
Oh, good, thank you.
So there's really no property, or, you know, I know you live right there, you don't really have a really good access, even from your spot.
No, not really.
Maybe signage to. Maybe signage to, not only naming the park, and, you know, residents feel free to meander through the woods, but maybe signage to that, you know, destruction or cutting trees is strictly prohibited, something to that, something to that effect, signage as well, not just, not just labeling it.
Right.
Well, that's what Greg said about prosecution, there's nothing to enforce with no regulations to enforce. We need that.
Okay.
Well, and a complaint, right, so next time, you can get on the phone.
Okay, so, you know, I have reached out, and I will reach out to the scouts if, if there's much left to do. Is there enough for the-
Oh, yeah, there's enough for several volunteer groups to-
We can kind of talk about trying to level some of the land in things, too, where they built up the berms and things to try, so there is a lot of things that they could be working on progressively.
So in the area where the, the structure was, all that leveled out, raked up, you can't even tell that a berm was there.
Oh, okay.
But further back, there are berms back there, which I think we discussed that needed to be addressed.
And we're not, we're not sure if, we're not sure if those berms are on the line behind one particular house.
Agreed.
Okay. Okay. Well, I will, I will have further discussions with, with Dr. Outlaw. Okay. I'll have, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, please. Motion by councilman, or councilman Scornico to adjourn, support.
Sliva.
Karen Sliva. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion is adjourned. Thank you.